Good morning. If everyone would please silence their cell phones. Oh, look at that, people grabbing, that's great. Okay, the invocation this morning will be offered by PCSO Chaplain Donna Samo. And all those that would like to participate, please stand.
Almighty God, enlighten each member of this Board of Supervisors as they come together for this meeting. I pray that every person will have a clear understanding of the issues that need to be discussed. Please give clarity to the purpose of this meeting and what objectives need to be accomplished. May those objectives be kept on track by the facilitator and bond all of the members together with a common goal. Also, I pray may those objectives drive each individual to actively participate rather than just passively listen. God, please enable everyone to wisely and efficiently manage the time allotted for this meeting. Help them to stick to the agenda and avoid getting distracted with discussions that are not pertinent to the objectives. Finally, I pray that this meeting will be professional, productive, and that the desired outcomes may be achieved. Amen.
Thank you. Supervisor Miller, would you do the pledge, please?
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, well, welcome to the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, August 21, 2024, regular meeting. We are in order. Supervisor, I'm sorry, Chairman Goodman will be joining us telephonically. Ms. Kennedy, he is on now or is he coming on intermittently?
Chairman Goodman?
I'm on.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Goodman. All right. First item up is call to the public. I have some cards here. I would just say that when you come up, if you'd please state your name and general area where you reside. And be respectful and courteous of one another, even in your differences. Board members are limited by statute to only provide direction to staff to study matters. And they can only, and board members can only respond if their name is mentioned and ask them to study, ask the staff to study the matter or request placement on a future agenda at the conclusion of the public comments. The first card I have up is Barry McCain.
Good morning, Chairman Goodman, told you're not here. And Board of Supervisors, staff and friends, my name is Barry McCain. I think this is election time and everything's going crazy and I want to appreciate and show my appreciation how much I have for this Board of Supervisor. I don't know how you get things done. I'm having trouble myself, but I want everybody to know the elections part has done a great job and I know nothing's perfect, but they've really done a wonderful job and I think should be said. And I look forward to seeing you guys every time I get a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. All right, next is, and I'm sorry, I will mess this up, John, I can't read the last name, from Eloy?
John Orton.
I'm sorry, John Orton, sorry about that, I couldn't.
Thank you. Yes, I'm in the unincorporated area outside of Eloy. I have two items today that I want to speak about. First, I would like to address Mr. Kevin Kavanaugh on comments that were made at the last meeting. I would like an explanation as to why the statements of, it's hard to hear what was going on because there was so much confusion on the board up here, but I'd like to hear an explanation of that. Second item is, this last week, the second item is addressed to Mr. Kent Volkmer. Last week was a very interesting week for the Pinal County Republican Committee LLC. The Corporate Commission dissolved the LLC on Monday, August 12th of 2024, for not correcting false or erroneous statements made on the Articles of Organization within the 60 days given. The LLC provided the necessary information to have the LLC reinstated on August 16th. Within this paperwork, a change to the membership also was submitted that changed the membership from 450-plus PCs to only one, Kurt Feller, thereby disenfranchising all of the PCs in Pinal County, not just for the appointed PCs but the elected ones as well. PCRC LLC is the legal entity for the Pinal County Republican Committee, as stated in the operating agreement of 2022. Having only one member listed in the legal entity article of organization documents is a violation of Arizona Revised Statutes 16-821, 16-824, and 16-1004, which is a, which is a Class 6 felony. This information was all given, the information was presented by my wife several months ago at this body. Mr. Volkmer, I even talked to him personally since then, and he says we don't want to get involved in party issues, was his explanation, but there's, a felony is a criminal charge and somebody needs to do something. All I got to say is, God says, all things done in secret will be made known and come to light. People need to repent. Thank you. I am giving a copy to the court of the documentation for what I said.
Thank you, Mr. Orton.
Look forward to your response.
Next up, I have Mr. Ellison. And again, if we could all please state your name and generally where you're from for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, George Ellison, Gold Canyon. Democrat politicians and activists never tell us what they're for. They just slander and smear Republicans, so I'm going to make the Democrat case for them. We are a violent Marxist revolutionary party which denies democracy. In 2020, we sicked Antifa and BLM on America. During the BLM riots, over 20 blacks were murdered. Now we're sicking pro-Hamas violent groups on you. We Democrats are the real election deniers. Joe Biden won the Democrat primaries with 96% of the votes. 14 million Democrats voted for him, but after his disastrous debate with President Trump, we executed a coup d'etat and we got rid of Biden by ignoring the democratic process and we replaced him with cackling Queen Kamala who didn't get one single Democrat primary vote. It's our precious Democrat Party, not our precious democracy, that's important to us. We Democrats are victim-denying pro-criminals who let criminals out of jail with no bail, keep them out of prison, and we let them commit crime after crime, including murder, rape, and armed robbery against law-abiding black and Hispanic citizens. We Democrats are American deniers because we unleashed a 10-million-person illegal alien invasion, which is causing crime in the United States to rise exponentially. Illegal aliens have committed over 70,000 crimes, including murder and rape against American citizens. We Democrats are Jew-denying anti-Semites, and we support the terrorist organization Hamas that murdered and raped Israeli women, children, and grandmothers, gouged eyes out and burned alive Israeli babies. We Democrat students and university deans won't let American Jews attend universities. We let mobs beat them up. Now we're taking over Chicago this week. You'll give us what we want. We Democrats are misogynistic women deniers. Well, we don't know what a woman is, but we want men pretending to be women to beat thousands of young female athletes in the sports that they worked at for years to excel in. Lousy male athletes change their names, but they're still bigger, stronger, and faster than any girl, and sometimes they literally beat the living daylights out of the young female athletes. We Democrats are pedophilia victim deniers. Democrat California lowered the penalty from a felony to a misdemeanor for pedophilia to have sexual relations with a victim as young as 14, so long as the victim is less than 10 years younger than the criminal. And we Democrats are child and children deniers, and we support permanent child genital mutilation for kids with gender dysphoria that we Democrats caused by our insane child grooming liberal teachers, administrators, and lunatic leftist parents. And we want the kids libraries to have explicit books on how to be gay and transgender when they're not watching a drag show. For the horror show that we've unleashed on you Americans, you need to vote for us. Just don't throw us in jail.
Thank you. No applause, please, keep it, keep it down, please. All right. Next is Ross Dunphy.
It's kind of hard to follow that up, you know?
And please state your name and generally where you're from, sir.
Chairman Goodman, members of the board, I'm Ross Dunphy. I reside at Robeson Ranch in Eloy. When purchasing something, it's common to do a little purchase review to confirm the purchase was worthwhile. Comparing expectations against reality can sometimes be rewarding, sometimes disappointing, but it's necessary to have criteria and performance to make a comparison. Pinal County taxpayers are asked to renew the 40-year-old Transportation Road Maintenance and Improvement Fund excise tax. So it's important to review the expectations against performance to determine it's, if the provided funds were beneficial. Since I didn't reside in Pinal County 20 years ago, it's difficult to know what the expectations were at the time, but thanks to a town hall presentation, the results were provided by Public Works. According to Public Works, after 40 years of spending taxpayers' funds for road maintenance, the roads were rated at 62 out of 100. That's pathetic. It's hard to believe that 40 years of spending taxpayer funds, the result is an unacceptable performance, 62 out of 100. But looking around the road network provides some answers. It appears that roadway pavement and maintenance is substituted for replacement. Instead of maintaining and preserving pavement and thereby roadways, pavement is not maintained and simply allowed to prematurely deteriorate natural disintegration. That simply replace the pavement after it fails. It is not, that is not maintenance. Maintenance is preserving what exists, not replacing it. If the county took the same approach to vehicles as it does to roadway maintenance, all changes would happen every 50,000 miles. The unacceptable result would be to replace failed drivetrains due to lack of maintenance, just like our roadways are replaced today. Maybe it's time to get more serious about roadway maintenance and appropriately spend taxpayer contributions for what they were intended, maintenance instead of replacement. I'm looking for reasons to vote in favor of the Transportation Road Maintenance and Transportation Fund excise tax. What were the expectations 20 years ago? Were those expectations met? It's hard to believe that a rating of 62 out of 100 was the expectation. Regardless, what are the expectations for the next 20-year tax? By example, how many miles of crack seal and pavement seal will occur in the next 20 years? What's the target result? 72 out of 100? 82 out of 100? What maintenance, not replacement, is to be annually performed and where are the annual performance reports to demonstrate acceptable performance? Obviously, I'm struggling to find reasons to vote in favor of the requested tax. I want my funds to preserve our existing roadway investment, not simply use my funds to replace infrastructure because maintenance was not performed. Show me how my money is to be spent if it is intended to spend my money, my maintenance money on maintenance. I can vote affirmatively. Please show me the expectation and what I should expect after the next 20 years. Wouldn't it be nice, 20 years hence, to be able to tell taxpayers and maintenance, that maintenance taxes were spent for roadway maintenance and Pinal County roadways are now rated well above 62? Thank you for your time. I'll give a copy to the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Dunphy.
Any questions?
We're not allowed to respond, just for, just reference.
Thank you.
Mr. Trout.
Good morning, I'm Arlen Trout, I'm from Gold Canyon, and I'm specifically requesting responses from Chairman Goodman, Kevin Kavanaugh, and any board members that feel the responsibility to respond. Yesterday, the Apache County Attorney, his wife, and the assistants were indicted by Attorney General Chris Mays for abuse of power. They face charges of harassment, threats, theft, secret meetings, tampering with public records, misuse of public funds, and manipulation of the electoral process by targeting opponents with public resources. Apache County's Board of Supervisors just voted to pay their attorney fees and legal costs with public funds. Does any of this sound familiar? Abuse of power with public funds to maintain power is a broader issue that transcends both political parties and county borders. I have begged Kevin Volkmer, Sheriff Lamb, and this board to step forward long before Pinal County was hauled into court for sanctions regarding violations of court orders in the Trout versus Russell case. The first obligation to your oath of office or responsibility as elected officials is to respond. Response is required action that transforms duty into transparency and trust. This domino in Pinal County scandal of these costly expenditures of public funds and legal entanglements were preventable. The board has had many reports and requests for assistance since September of '23, yet this board chose to hire attorneys with public funds and remain silent before your elections. Further than, rather than representing, responding to these critical issues head-on and prevent deeper troubles and further expenditures of public resources. The board's hired attorneys do not have the authority to force your silence or object, obstruct your ethical responsibility to respond to the public. This is your choice. However, I'm respectfully and formally requesting Chairman Mike Goodman and the other board members individually provide a response and explain what you know about my reports and requests for assistance since September of '23. On the Trout matter, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. Next, I have Ms. Peters.
My name is Gail Peters, I'm from Santan Valley in the beautiful state of Arizona. I want to congratulate all of those candidates who made it through the primary. Great job. As is said, elections have consequences. Some of those consequences from our primary were surprising and disappointing, frankly, and some were not surprising and not unwelcome. At the recent election, Pinal County lost a valuable member of the team that was instrumental in reducing crime in Pinal County by 27%, something that is pretty unusual in today's environment. I want to repeat that for emphasis. Felony crime in Pinal County reduced by over 27% at the same time that Pinal experienced a 25% growth in population. Had Pinal County interviewed for the job of county attorney, they could not have found a better candidate than Kent Volkmer. Ideally, the county attorney is in a position that should be filled by a candidate who misrepresents or inflates their background and experience. In my opinion, the individual on the ballot should at least be vetted to make sure their campaign promises are within the job description and that they have the qualifications to do the job. Ideally, the county supervisors would want to know what experience a candidate had to lead a department of 150 people. Kent Volkmer is regarded highly by those he works with, as well as groups and associations. Domestic violence events have been brought attention by Mr. Volkmer, working with the county, to start a new department to provide medical examinations to victims of domestic abuse and sexual assault. Before this program, victims were required to leave the county for these services. Now PCSO can provide better, more timely treatment to victims locally while saving the taxpayer money. The exemplary county program for young people to promote jobs at the CSI program in public safety, furthered awareness of what to do in an emergency situation. In addition, Kent Volkmer expedited the process of getting Volkmers, which saved, again, the county valuable time and money. And also, he catches his son, he also coaches his son's baseball, basketball team. I want to quote Pinal County Editor Donovan Kramer, who wrote, "Volkmer has done an exemplary job of reorganizing an office that, under his predecessor, was costing the county a fortune. Many other defendants had been languishing in jail with public defenders, all at taxpayers' expense. Voters in their wisdom decided on someone we know little about." I'm sure Kent Volkmer has great opportunities ahead of him, but this is a big loss for Pinal County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Are there others that wish to speak to the board? Please, of course, state your name and generally where you're from.
Yes, sir. My name is Belinda Rodriguez, and I am from Gold Canyon, and I am also the chair for the Pinal County Republican Committee. So I just want to start off by saying that, first of all, since Mr. Orton continues to remind us repeatedly of what a wonderful Christian he is, I'd like to remind him of one verse. I'm sure he is familiar with it, but has obviously lost sight of it. Proverbs 14:25. "A true witness delivereth souls, but a deceitful witness speaketh lies." Bearing witness is no trivial matter. Even if we are not testifying in court under oath, our words have great power. When we speak truth about others, we honor their character and integrity, but spreading gossip, rumors, and lies only spreads damage and harm. As God's children, we must be mindful to love our neighbors at all times. Sometimes it's difficult. And that included, that includes being mindful of how we talk about them. Now I'm going to provide you with the facts as to what occurred with the PCRC LLC, and if individuals had reached out to me individually, I would have gladly done that before emails and disparaging comments were distributed. On June 13th, 2024, the law firm of Willenchek and Bartonis, who serves as PCRC's statutory agent, had been notified by the Arizona Corporation Commission that the address listed for the statutory agent needed to be changed from a PO box to a street address within 60 days in order to avoid an administrative dissolution of PCRC LLC. Unfortunately, when that June 13th notification was sent to Jack Willenchek of Willenchek and Bartonis, who is our statutory agent, he had been out of the office battling cancer and then passed away on July 23rd, 2024. My heartfelt and sincerest condolences to his family, his peers, staff, and friends. Mr. Jack Willenchek's paralegal discovered the notification of the request to submit a street address on August 12th, the day our grace period expired. On August 12th, our statutory agent, Willenchek and Bartonis Law Firm emailed a letter to the PCRC District 2 Chair, not the PCRC Chair, asking if PCRC wanted the law firm to continue as our statutory agent, and if so, an address change needed to be submitted to reflect a street address as opposed to appeal.
Ms. Rodriguez, can, is it a quick wrap-up?
Yes.
Okay.
So, just to make it short and quick, I reached out to them after a lengthy, lengthy discussions with the law firm, Arizona Corporation Commission. We were reinstated on Friday morning at 9:06. So PCRC is in good standing, active standing. We do, we did have to list a member.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
That was just one of the quick wrap-up. Supervisor Kavanaugh, is that your? Okay. I understand, I understand. I give them a few seconds, but I understand. Okay, any others that care to speak before the board?
Chairman Goodman, board members, I'm Boots Hawks, president and founder of Conservative Freedom Lovers of the great city of Casca Grande in Pinal County. I have over 800 members in my group. We have other groups, Conservative Freedom Lovers, in Coolidge, Florence, and Maricopa. We do a lot. But one thing that I've been hearing lately is my name put out there in this room, also before our school board, which I am now a member of, and in the newspaper. I think that I have to take time to respond to this. I am being disparaged by two individuals of the Democrat Party, Noel Rec and Ralph Atchew. They think that it's a crime to support ESA. Just a few months ago, reading found out that Newsweek did a survey across this country and determined that there was 10 high schools, out of all the high schools in this country, that was in the top 10 of the 100 best high schools. Bravo, Arizona. That's what we need. That's what we deserve. That's what the kids deserve. Reading further, I found out that all these high schools were private. Not one public high school was in there. So they say it's a bad thing to support ESA. Why? Because it's a great place for kids to get an education? Isn't that what we have schools for? Isn't that our responsibility to educate those who are going to come after us? I would hope that everybody would feel that in their heart, but for some reason, these two individuals don't. They worry about bringing these kids back into the high schools and into the other schools rather than let them be in a private school. Well, wonderful for them, but the problem is, is that our classrooms are already over, overpopulated. Too many kids in them. Let's get these kids out there. Let's teach the kids. Let's care about the kids. That's the number-one thing. And as I go forward to run for the high school board in November, I say education, not politics. Let's get the politics out of the school. Let's take the schools back to where they belong, and that's taking care of the kids and educating them. Get kids out there that could read, write, do mathematics, bring their level up to an acceptable point to where they could do good for our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawks. No applause, please. Any others that care to speak?
Thank you for your time and consideration. I have a number of different matters to bring up. First of all, on the ESA issue, I am a current board member of the Casca Grande Union High School District, though I am not speaking for the Casca Grande Union High School District. But I will tell you that the height of ignorance is to take students that are doing above average and doing better than what the schools here locally are doing and bring them into a position where we put them back in a school that is below average. Now, on a national basis, the last that I read was that Arizona was number 50 out of number, out of 50 states in their poor quality of teaching their students, and that they're only, typically speaking, a high school student is only at a fifth or a sixth grade level of understanding in math, science, and reading. If we look at the scores that the private schools are getting, they are by far better than that. Now, I have a hard time understanding why anybody would want to take a student that's doing that good and put them in a school that is not doing anywhere near as well. It makes sense to some, but certainly me, it doesn't. The other thing is, I would like to have an appointment with Mr. Lou and the, the Building Codes Department over some issues concerning Chaparral Estates. And I have already had a meeting with Steve Miller about it, and this is the next step that I need to take. So if you would contact me, Steve Hunt, Chaparral Estates, so that we can set up that appointment, I would appreciate it very much. The last thing that I want to mention to you is, I hear a lot of screaming and yelling about democracy. My God, we got to save democracy. My God, we've got to save democracy. We are not and never have been a democracy. Those that are screaming, "Let's save democracy," don't understand the difference between democracy and a constitutional republic. Myself, I want to stand for a constitutional republic. I do not want a democracy in this country. I think that that would be the worst thing that could happen to this country. Learn the difference, understand the difference, stand for the difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Are there any others that care to speak to the call? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the call to the public. Thank you. Mr. Miller, you were, Supervisor Miller, you were called out. Did you have anything to say?
No. He just referenced that he'd had a meeting with me, and I'd suggested that he mention that to establish a conversation with Mr. Lou.
Okay. That's okay. Thank you. Supervisor Goodman, are you still on the phone?
I am.
You, you am. All right. And you, your name was mentioned by Mr. Trout. Did you have anything to say?
Yes, I'd like to have our county staff and attorney help me draft up a response because I know there's a lawsuit, and I just want to make sure that I'm saying the appropriate things and so on and so forth.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Volkmer, you're not on the board, but your name was called out. Do you care to respond to anything by Mr. Orton Trout? Repeat, nothing? Okay. Supervisor Kavanaugh, your name was mentioned by Mr. Trout and Mr. Orton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to the Trout matter, I read the emails coming in. We have counsel on the issue, and we have to continue to monitor what goes on with the county. And I just heard Supervisor Goodman ask for an update on that, and I'd like to be included in on that. And with respect to John Orton's question, a week or so ago, I delivered a preliminary report to the board that showed clear evidence, of mathematical evidence of cheating, of changing vote totals in the Pinal County primary election. It impacted several races. It appeared that Todd House may have actually won in his race. Pete Saban may have won against Mr. McClure. It is likely I won the sheriff's race. And so, and even Miller's race was impacted by this. And so, we did the preliminary results, and then we, I hired a $750-an-hour data scientist to look at it.
Excuse me, Supervisor, can you get closer to the microphone? People are having a hard time hearing.
Sure. We hired a $750 data scientist. We hired a statistician to look it over. So we're continuing to look at these issues and reviewing video and so on and so forth. So that's the issue I brought up last week, and I'm concerned about what's going on inside the elections office, and we'll, we'll publish, publicize those things soon.
All right. And that is it, as far as I can see. All right. Next is item number two, County Manager's Report. Mr. Lou.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Vice Chairman McClure. I just wanted to let you and the public know that last week, our credit ratings agency did a review on us. They updated some of their criteria, and so they wanted to review us. This, for the public, I guess, similar to a credit score that you would have, you know, for your, for your own house when you're issuing credit or debt. The county is rated by agencies to give us a score, and they do it by letters. So they gave us a double-A rating, which is a very strong, solid rating for a government issuer. We're very close to a double-A plus, and I don't think we're far from a triple-A, which is the best rating that you can get. And we'll talk about this more in our strategic planning session in the future. But just to note, some of the strengths that were articulated for us, of course, as you all know, population and the growth that we experienced there, the diversification of our economy, which you've all worked on over the last decade, financial resilience, which has to do with the low level of our long-term liability compared to our revenues and compared to our incomes. And then they also remarked on our abilities at the county level for revenue and expenditure, revenue and expenditure control and budget flexibility. And then on some of the things we can improve on as a community are things that we are continuing to work on, employment, education, and household income. And then there's some other administrative things that we'll do. So, so again, it's been our goal to maintain or increase this rating, and I think in the next four years, we'll move to a double-A plus for sure, and I think a triple-A is within reach. We'll see if we can get there. Thank you.
Good news. Thank you, Mr. Lou. And so, next, we have item number three, Supervisor District Upgrade, Upgrades, Updates. I will start with Supervisor Kavanaugh, District One.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Your mic's off.
Thank you. We have, want to recognize Rick Miller, the city manager of Coolidge. He's retiring after 10 years, and he'll be honored by a luncheon today at the Coolidge Chamber, if you can get over there. And Maricopa has their Keep Maricopa Beautiful event, the fifth Saturday, the fifth Saturday, the fifth, excuse me, this is written incorrectly, Trash Pickup Saturday, August 31st. And for those in Maricopa, they would need to select an area in their neighborhood or community and clean between eight and nine and, and help, help volunteer to clean up the streets of Maricopa.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor, what's your name?
I have one additional item. So I think I kind of covered this, but once, once our report is finished, I'll be, I'll be traveling to show people the, the problems we found in the, in the, in the primary throughout the district. And so folks can challenge me on the math, challenge me on anything, and, but I want to show you how we arrived at the conclusions we did.
Thank you. Okay. Supervisor Miller.
No report.
No report. Supervisor Sertie.
I just want to give a report that after five years with a committee and dozens, if not hundreds, of people working in order to try to get ADOT to open up Fish Creek Hill Apache Trail, that it will be open on September 16th. It will be four-wheel-drive only, no large trailers, although people are allowed to take boats up there. So that's going to tweak itself out a little bit. But you'll be able to drive the whole loop once again, which is the best place if you want to take tourists to this area, start out by the ghost town, drive all the way around to Roosevelt Lake and come back through Superior, and so happy that that will be opened again September 16th.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Supervisor Sertie. I have no report. Supervisor Goodman, do you have a video? You have a video? Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, we have a video. It's in regards to the Santa Valley survey that we're doing, and just want to remind everybody that it's still open. So, anyway, you can go ahead and show the video. Action.
County Supervisor here, Mike Goodman, for District Two. I hope everybody's had a good summer, despite the record highs that we've had. We are in the process of sending information out for a survey. This is what we do annually, so that we can gather your input as residents, so that we can have a better understanding of where we need to take directions within our county, this particular area of Santa Valley. It's important to remember that our area is unincorporated, so your feedback, the information that you give us, will help us determine priorities that will best serve our citizens here in District Two. This year, there was a couple of key demographic questions that were added, so that we have a better understanding of what our, our district looks like. This survey only takes a few moments to fill out, so I'm asking you to take the time to do so. It's important that families have input, but would parents please be the ones to fill this information out? The results of this survey will help us become more aware of the needs and the progress that we have currently in our area. The goal here is to help us increase the responses that we had from last year. This will help us to be able to better plan to make our area a better place to live, work, and play. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Supervisor Goodman, Chairman. That survey is open until the end of the month, August, so just another week or so here, week and a half. You can find it on the Pinal County website. Okay. Next, item number four, the presentation discussion on the County Supervisors Association of Arizona. Mr. Sullivan, I believe you are up.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to stand before you. For the record, I'm Craig Sullivan with the County Supervisors Association, and it's really my pleasure to be here with you today to talk about the activities of the association over the last year and a little bit about how we'll be moving forward. I did provide to you a document that has a lot of content in it about our key areas, including our intergovernmental work, our data and analytics function, our strategic initiatives, and the legislature. I'm going to walk through some of that, but I won't talk about it in detail. You've got a lot of other work to do, but I would welcome any questions that you have as we go through the slide deck. I do, I do want to begin by thanking this board. You all are very involved in our association. Your colleague counties are grateful for your involvement in it. Supervisor Miller, we've been fortunate to have your leadership as president this year. Thank you. I know it's just extra duty to everything else you're doing, but you multitask very well, and we've been grateful for it. And I want to commend your staff, County Manager Lou, your policy advisor, Tammy Ryle, your policy consultants, Mark Barnes and Alexis Sustorf. They are fantastic, and we always get excellent information and guidance on how our association can serve you, and that's really what makes the collaboration really strong. So I just want to extend that appreciation before I admire you and a bunch of charts and graphics as we go through this. Let me just begin with, and I think, let me make sure I've got this. So just for the constituents in the room, let me just talk a little bit about who the association is first. So the association's a collaboration of the 15 county governments in this state. We do nonpartisan research and policy work. The counties created this association many years ago because it's more efficient to back office a lot of this work and centralize it. Counties certainly do their own initiatives, but there's a lot of work that can just be centralized, and all the counties benefit from what we do. And the real goal is to forge a partnership between the state and federal government and county officials to do better policy work and service the constituents. That's what we're all trying to do together. And so I'm very proud to serve in this capacity and support you in that role. A little bit about some of how we operate as a intergovernmental office, what I did hear is just to provide just a splash of information that helps you see how we use our regular board meetings to bring in elected officials and policy professionals to talk with county-elected leaders about issues that are relevant. Our association serves on or appoints people to key workgroups and advisory committees and policy committees to make sure that counties are represented there. Most recently, we served on the Governor's Water Policy Council. I serve on the PSPRS Advisory Committee. We appoint people to PSPRS Board of Trustees, things like that, or nominate candidates for appointment. So it's how we really strengthen that intergovernmental partnership with these external parties that affect you. I also wanted to highlight at the bottom the work that's done among policy professionals. And so we have what we call affiliate groups, where we regularly are connecting with the policy experts in the counties, the practitioners, county managers, the planning directors, the civil deputies, engineers, things like that. It really forges a strong collaboration across all the counties. Instead of being siloed, folks are talking to each other, and we're helping problem-solve. And we also partner with our neighbor, the Arizona Association of Counties, who represents our friends who are in the other elected offices, and we really connect there too, to find areas of mutual interest, and we're grateful for that. So there's a lot of activity, a lot of meetings, a lot of connection to provide support. I'd like to break down a little bit about our county data initiative. A major strategic initiative of our organization for many years has been building a mountain of data that can be brought to bear on policy analysis. So we've got a database that exceeds 4 million data points now, and it grows every year, and we use that to better inform and to break down what's happening on policy decisions. It helps the legislature. It helps the counties. We're currently building that out more aggressively in the court space, and so we're doing some surveys about court costs and various relationships in the, in the counties. As you know, we are funding partners with the court system and the, and the state, but we need to get better information on that to make better decisions. And so we're very proud of the data initiative that we're building, and it adds new value every year. We've been organized into other strategic initiatives. Our team secured $1.4 million in grants from the Arizona Board of Regents to do studies. Two of those studies are in public safety recruitment and retention, and also in detention, the detention space for recruitment and retention. We sent in a grant along with the Sheriff's Association to do some work into detention specifically, after we had done some work in the sheriff's offices, fire departments, things like that, to better understand this. I do want to acknowledge, I saw Mary Ellen Shepherd out in the lobby, she has been instrumental at providing technical guidance to our team as we've participated in these collaborations. So our goal here is to put better information on the table to inform strategies for recruitment and retention in this important function. I'd also like to highlight a procurement model study that we're deploying right now, and this is just to get a better handle on best practices and associated metrics in procurement. We think that's going to add value and add a return on the investment to the taxpayer. And we've been building out content to be available to counties that have particular interests in various policy areas, expenditure limits, levy limits, things like that. And so that's an ongoing strategic initiative of ours as well. Very briefly, on public safety pensions, a lot of these strategic initiatives take a lot of time, and so what this highlights is the trajectory of the funded status of the corp and PSPRS systems over the last several years. And you'll note, and you'll remember, that six or seven years ago, you all got together with your colleagues around the state, recognized that the costs of these pension systems were getting excessive, were burdensome, were volatile, and we set a specific strategic initiative to start improving that situation, working with the League of Cities and Towns, working with the PSPRS Board of Trustees and the legislature. And you can see from the numbers that we've come a long way in that. And that's really the power of collaborative effort among the counties and working with the state, and we've been very proud of that, and you can see some of the specific actions and results that were born out of that effort. The real challenge now in this space is protecting this investment and making sure that additional policy changes at the state level don't degrade the progress that we've made. And so that's how it connects with our intergovernmental activity at the state. We all have been involved in broadband deployment for many years, and that's accelerated with the federal resources. Tammy Ryle, on your team, project managing that effort, has been an outstanding partner with us, helping guide us and helping us in our work with the ACA, the federal government, as well as the National Association of Counties, to pursue good results in this space. And so that's an ongoing effort of ours as well. I'm going to move very quickly through some legislative slides, but a big part of what we do is on the legislative engagement, so I want to touch on that. You all know that there are hundreds of bills every year that go in the legislative process that affect county government. What we're trying to do is to provide good quality feedback from you and your professional staff to lawmakers when they're making those decisions. This session, the context was basically focused on the governor sending signals that she'll veto items that she views as partisan. She wants things to be working on both sides of the aisle. That's led the legislature to refer, refer important policy items they want to the ballot if they can't get a signature from, from her. That means there's about 11 items on the ballot this year. But overwhelmingly, the major contextual item was about the budget. We were very concerned as counties because often the state will shift its problems to the county taxpayer, and we, we often have to dig that out. The state had a $1.4 billion shortfall. There's a lot of content here, but the key takeaways are these. They solved their budget problem within the corners of their budget. They transferred funds, did one-time spending cuts, did ongoing spending cuts to agencies. There were not shifts to the local taxpayer the way we had seen in prior recessions. And I think a big part of that was because the communication between the boards of supervisors began last October, talking to legislators that it wasn't right to shift problems, and legislators like yours responded to that, and we were really pleased that they stayed away from the county coffers to solve their problem. This next slide. This next slide highlights some of the things that were touched. Mr. Miller, you're very involved in water policy. They did sweep dollars out of the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority. We've got a big water problem, we need resources to help solve it. They also swept the state's allocation of opioid settlement monies. They did not touch the local government, but some of these dollars were working their way down to local projects in the form of grants. And I also listed the ongoing cuts to state agencies. Now, there was a lot of good in terms of how they protected the counties, but there are some things we have to highlight because these are items we're going to have to continue to work on. These are cost issues in the state budget that expose your general fund, right? The state is still shifting costs to Maricopa County for the Department of Juvenile Corrections. Your county was removed from that several years ago. Vince Leach helped get Pinal County out of that. Probation for state-funded probation officers, the state has still not met its ongoing commitment to fund its obligations to state-funded probation officers. And so those folks are going year by year, and we're getting those dollars patched. This fiscal year, we have been told that the governor's office will backfill that with federal money, and so they'll be made whole, but the question is what happens in the next fiscal year? And so we really need to work with lawmakers on a sustainable solution for state-funded probation officers. And JP salaries, they did sweep some dollars from the JP salary reimbursement fund. You know that the counties pay 60% of JPs, the state pays 40%. This came out of that pot for reimbursement. We're going to have to get that recapitalized going forward. They also made an adjustment to Superior Court judge salaries, which, as you know, then increased county costs, increased costs associated with commissioners, increased costs associated with the JPs. There's going to be a need for the state to backfill the exposure on that as well. Bunch of other items that were protected in the budget, but it's kind of a laundry list of things we have worked on, things like indigent defense money, juvenile dependency, and Lou lottery money. We were grateful that those stayed, they were very exposed. A big part of what we do for the counties is what we call reactive advocacy. Counties often run bills that are in their particular interest. We focus on the things that touch everybody, and we're just responding to them, providing feedback. This just gives you a sense of the diversity of policy areas that our team works on, and I'm very proud of the work that our legislative team does to get feedback on all of these issues. This list is about enacted bills, and I think I'd just point out that in the upper left, those were the priorities that we had this year, expanding the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission, working on the automatic recount policy item that we all identified last year. ACO led out on that, given their role in election directors and recorders, they did a great job, and we provided support on that as well. So we had a fairly small legislative agenda. It was largely playing defense, fielding bills that were in process. There are a lot of bills, though, that do touch county operations. Most of them are small changes, but I know that your policy professionals are navigating that now. We're looking at changes to how we do appointments for legislators, some reporting associated with permitting and things like that. If your team has any questions about any bills that have been recently enacted, we're happy to work through that with them. The tools we distribute to everybody to help with that are listed for you here, our legislative summaries, Finance Officer Guide, things like that. We just want to be a resource for everybody. And I tried to quantify, Mr. Miller, you spent so much time on our Legislative Policy Committee, I know Mr. Goodman did too, so I at least wanted to show you that there was a lot of work done and a lot of good results. But what this really underscores is the feedback to lawmakers and them working with us to stop bills that didn't work. We amended a lot of bills favorably. Our team testified 30 times this last session. Most of that was done by Jacob Emtin. He worked really hard to get our voice out in committee. But this is just how we're talking about forging the partnership with lawmakers, and we value supervisors coming down to the Capitol to help get that message out. And then the reward for wrapping up a session is you've got to do it all over again, and so we're asking, we're coming back to Pinal County. I look at Natasha, we're going to do our strategic conference here in Pinal County again. I trust you'll attend, it's in the neighborhood, but this is our most important meeting of the year. This is where we're going to talk about our policy initiatives, talk about our strategic initiatives, and then set specific priorities for the next legislature, and so I look forward to seeing you there, and I do thank you for hosting it again this year. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll end there. I know I took a lot of your time, but I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
I don't think there's any, are there any questions? Oh, by the way, nice pictures of you, Supervisor Miller.
That was a water, I was testifying at a Water Resource Committee there because I can see the water attorney sitting right behind me.
Craig, thank you for the presentation today. I think you cut short on a little bit of the county data initiative. I mean, what was, how much data do we have? The other two previous deliveries of this program that I've sat through on Monday, you used a number, was it like 4 million or?
Yeah, yeah, excellent point, Supervisor. So the dataset, it exceeds 4 million data points right now that we refresh with new information coming in, and it's continuing to be built. And so it's all sorts, it's tax-related information, cost-sharing information, and it just continues to grow more and more.
And the point I want to bring to that is Craig's team, he's really fortunate to have this team that he has because they can pull all of this information together on a particular item and make sense of it. It gives us good, solid data, and I can't speak highly enough of this operation. This is probably one of the best organizations I've seen that is really for the good of the counties. We do spend probably 95% of our time in defense, trying to keep everybody from raking money from us or putting the burden on us to fund things, and Craig's team really does a great, great job. And you didn't introduce your newest member, who I think is going to be a star someday.
Yeah, I'm glad you pointed that out. I was just finding a way to weave that in, so you helped me, but Caitlin King has joined us here. She's our new legislative liaison and working with our team. She's one month on the job and has enjoyed the road trip so far, so.
But it's always, it's always at the meetings, it's so, you know, Vanessa and Brandon, when they deliver this information to us and puts, put it in a format that we can really understand and how we can apply it to policy setting going forward is fantastic, so thank you for all the hard work, and it's been a pleasure serving as the president this year, and just thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for all your work. Thank you, Supervisor Miller, for all your work this last year, we appreciate it.
Appreciate you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
I have a question.
I think Mr. Serdy raises his hand first.
Yeah.
I didn't see you down there, you were being quiet. Sorry about that.
Okay. I know there's a national organization, but does every state in the country have an organization similar to this?
Yeah, that's an excellent point. I think about 40, 45 of them do. When you get up into, say, Massachusetts, they have a different kind of construct, or Maine, but there's probably about 40 associations, 45 associations similar to ours.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it? Okay.
Well, my question was to rearrange the order so we can hear item 20, where Pinal County is going to recognize potentially more than two genders, and I think that the audience may have an interest in that item. So if we can move that up following the election item, I'd appreciate that. I think it's 20, the HR issue, the policy update.
We could probably do that.
Unlawful discrimination policy.
I see that. Want it after what?
After elections.
After the elections.
After elections report. All right. So item 20, we'll push that up. Okay, item five, general elections report and election preparations, Ms. Lewis.
Good morning, Chairman Goodman, Vice Chairman McClure, members of the board, Dana Lewis, Pinal County Recorder. The public can have trust and confidence in the efficient and accurate administrative of the Pinal County elections. In the 2024 primary election, we openly and transparently processed a record number of ballots, tabulating and reporting results timely, and had a record low of provisional ballots. It was extremely important to us that every eligible voter have their ballot accurately counted in the most efficient timeline possible. At all times, the process was in full view of cameras with political observers, people from our community, watching every step of the way. The Elections Department's staff is to be commended for their diligent efforts to do the people's work. The 2024 election, general election key dates for Yocava ballots, they will be transmitted September 21st. The voter registration deadline, again, 29 days before an election, is October 7th. Early voting in person begins, and early ballots will be mailed on October 9th. The last day to request a ballot by mail is October 25th. We request that you return your early ballot by October 29th. Last day to vote early in person is November 1st, and Election Day, of course, is November 5th. The county canvas is set to be on November 20th. Some planning and training notes, our staff will be attending a virtual tabletop exercise regarding election preparedness. Our bi-monthly meetings with the Office of Emergency Management will resume in September. Contingency operations, emergencies, power outages, resources and support needs are all discussed during these meetings. The Poll Worker Manual for the General Election is almost complete. Our Poll Worker in-person training will involve setups, breakdowns, scenario base with position-centered experiences and hands-on with the tech. We will be adding more express votes for duplication in the tabulation room. Election programming for the general is underway, and ballot styles have been locked in the Avid system. Ballot proofs are going to candidates via email, city town clerks, and party chairs this Friday by 5:00 p.m. We request prompt response to receipt of proof. If you do not receive this by Friday at 5:00 p.m., please reach out, we will be standing by at 520-866-7550. You will then have until Tuesday, 4:00 p.m., to approve and/or submit changes if an error was made off of their nomination paperwork. We are scheduled, are in schedule with ballot proofing, design of sample ballots, and ballot ordering. Polling place updates will be presented at the next Board of Supervisors meeting. We have had some movement and changes, and being precinct-based, we believe it is important that we get this information out to the voters quickly. With curing of our ballots, early ballots, we've streamlined some of those processes as well, and we've reassigned additional staff to this division to meet the demands of the processing of early ballots going into the general election. For staffing, the votes building, we have 20, over 20 seasoned certified election officials preparing for the 2024 general election, and we're in the process of hiring additional election cycle temps. We do have about 25 returning, so we encourage people who want to be involved in our process to please go to Pinal Jobs and apply, excuse me. We will be split-shifting some of our teams for tabulation and early ballot processing, again, identifying the bottlenecks and fixing it going into the general election, and our signature verification training is scheduled for September 19th. In education and outreach, we are encouraging those with questions about our processes or to see the facility to please sign up for one of our Tuesday tours on the election website. We're learning that the questions can be easily answered in person and that people are reassured by the transparency in our processes. Any voter wishing to receive a Spanish-language ballot or a large-print ballot for the general election may contact the Early Voting Division at 520-866-7560. Third-party mailers have been going out in droves, folks, and they're often misleading. If you're not sure if it came from the Office of the Recorder or the Elections Department, please reach out to us directly, and when you're not sure about filling out a paper form that you don't recognize, contact our staff, and we will walk you through it online. Tabulation equipment, again, this is voter education and outreach now, is never connected to the internet, and we've been receiving questions about write-ins on our canvas. I think it's time to explain that process a little bit more eloquently, and there'll be an upcoming PSA, but when we post it on the canvas, it's because the ballot is being recognized as having that bubble filled in, and it's recorded. But then people ask, well, who were those candidates? We even had several reporters ask who those candidates are. We had a very small poll of official writing candidates for the past election, but we did have an exorbitant amount of unofficial write-ins. We don't track it, it's not required by law, and we don't do anything outside of the law, but I think it's reassuring to know that God, Mickey Mouse, and Elmo were very evident in our elections this cycle, but we do ask for the public's help in curbing this process. When you're watching on Election Day as we're doing tabulation or even during the early process and you're watching the ballots get stacked out, it's mostly because of that. We have to then stack out those write-in ballots. So even though we know people do them because they are enthusiastic or wanting to be seen, we please ask that if it is not an official writing candidate, to please curb that practice. Thank you, gentlemen, and I hope you have a fantastic Wednesday.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. All right. Per request, we're going to move item 20 up. Ms. Shepherd, you're up.
That's right.
I'm sorry.
Can, why are we moving this one up?
At the request of.
Was there something specific that?
It's a matter, I think this policy change is a matter of public interest. It may expose the county to more liability, and I wanted to hear from our HR department how these changes may or may not impact how we do business and if it is appropriate to enact this.
I think his reasoning is because a lot of the folks will be gone by the time we hit item 20, and he wants the full crowd to hear it.
I'm fine with that.
No, just we're updating our policy, but okay.
Good morning, Chairman Goodman, Vice Chairman McClure, members of the board, Mary Ellen Shepherd, Deputy County Manager. We are seeking your approval of proposed revisions to two county policies which cover discrimination, harassment, and code of conduct. The changes are necessary to reflect compliance with state and federal laws prohibiting discrimination and harassment in employment practices. They include, but are not limited to, ensuring our policies identify categories specifically protected by law against discrimination and harassment, identifying procedures for reporting complaints, and addressing how the county will respond to such complaints. The timing of this request is to support the county attorney's longstanding and future receipt of Victim of Crime Act, VOCA, funds. These funds, which come from offenders convicted of federal crimes, help to ensure appropriate and accessible services are available to crime victims throughout Pinal County. In order to be eligible for these funds, PCAO must meet the Department of Justice Victim of Crime Act policy requirements for civil rights compliance as administered through the Arizona Department of Public Safety. It is anticipated that a more comprehensive update to these critical policies, one which is already in the works, will be brought to the board in the near future. May I ask if the county attorney would like to add to my comments, considering I mentioned VOCA? If not, otherwise, may I answer any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Are there any questions?
I have some questions.
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And the VOCA funds, how much do we get in VOCA funds per year to support the victim program?
Vice Chairman McClure, Supervisor Kavanaugh, I'm sorry, I do not have that information.
And while the county attorney's figuring that out, you said we're adopting this to conform with state law. What state law is that?
So there, state and federal laws, these are to include categories of protected class that you now see detailed in the policy, as well as the, that's the pri- that you now see detailed in the policy, as well as the, that's the primary reason for the changes.
So maybe the county attorney can answer what specific law, state law, we're following, and then the federal law does not include these other gender-protected classes and so on. This, these changes, and we have, the board members have a highlighted copy here. It says, "Section A, discrimination, unfair, prejudicial, or wrongful treatment of a person based on characteristic or personal status that is protected by state or federal law includes, but is not limited to, race, color, national origin, ethnicity, religion, sex, including pregnancy and so on, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation." And then the next item is B, harassment. Harassment is a form of discrimination. It's unwelcome behavior based on a protected status, which may include, let's see here, "It creates an intimidating, hostile, or offensive work environment that unreasonably interferes with a employee's work performance." And it goes on to say, "Examples of conduct may constitute harassment, including, but not limited to, use of racial, religious, disability, or gender-based slurs, epithets, or negative stereotyping, the use of socially unacceptable words, demeaning a person based on protected status, and so on." So I think it was Ben Shapiro who, not long ago, talked about the slippery slope. He said, "The new system means the government can end your freedoms of speech, association, and religion by adding behavioral characteristics to the protected classes of anti-discrimination law." And I think that sums it up, sums my concerns pretty well. Does the county attorney have the state law that we're following? No? And do you have the...
Okay. No, I don't have it in my hands right now.
Okay, and then the amount that we're receiving VOCA funds? Can you give a ballpark?
County Attorney Volker, would you like to speak? Because what the heck, right?
For fiscal year '24, '25, it's $362,211. Those VOCA funds are used to fund victim advocates for victims of crime there. The best way I can describe them is they are navigators in the criminal justice system. Most people that come into the criminal justice system have never been in the system before. It's a very overwhelming, it's a very scary prospect. Our advocates, who are actually recognized here pretty frequently, are assigned to individuals. They sit down with them, make sure all their questions are answered, help them understand the process. They actually sit with them in court and help them sort of navigate this traumatic experience. That's what those VOCA funds are used for specifically. I think there's, I want to say five or six positions, I think, are covered specifically with those funds. With respect to the state law, I don't know that. I'll look into it for you, Supervisor. I was not prepared for agenda item 20 to be called early for one, but second, I was not prepared to answer those very specific questions. We'll certainly look into it and try and get it back to you ASAP.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, hearing none. This is discussion, approval, disapproval of the revisions.
I have further discussion, but no questions.
You have further discussion?
But no question. You asked for questions. I have commentary.
I did ask for questions, not commentary.
Okay. It said discussion, so my discussion, I guess, is I'm concerned that, you know, are we, how much of our free speech are we willing to give up for the $300,000? And is there some other way we can fund these positions without tying our, limiting our freedoms and to these funds, the strings that come attached with these federal government programs? So that's my comment. I'm concerned about that connection, and I don't think we should limit ourselves in this way.
Supervisor Goodman, I believe I hear you umming.
Yeah, yes. I'm not for sure. I didn't hear anything in there that puts any kind of stipulations other than protect the rights of individuals, and that's what these dollars are used for, is helping that process. Did I understand that correctly? Because I'm not hearing anything from what I'm hearing. I didn't hear anything to suggest that we're giving up liberties and freedoms in exchange for that.
So if I may respond, if Mr. Goodman's done...
You may, yes.
So there's a list, I mean, I turned it off, a list of about 170 genders, and so with the genders comes pronouns. Is that correct? Would we be required to speak someone's chosen pronoun?
Chairman Goodman, Vice Chairman McClure, Supervisor Kavanaugh, this policy isn't intended to require any specific use of language or characterization. It is intended to prevent discrimination and harassment based upon protected categories, as well as to prohibit conduct in the workplace. If allowed to continue, may give rise to illegal discrimination or harassment.
And that's my concern. If we, if we are putting in policy that we cannot use socially unacceptable words, who decides what is socially acceptable?
Can I respond to that?
Yes, Supervisor Goodman, go ahead.
I guess I felt to see, I mean, we already had hearings to this stuff already. I felt to see the argument that against it or anything of that nature takes away our freedoms.
Would, thank you. Would it be fair to say that this is an upgrading and professionalization of policy? Is that fair to say?
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor McClure, I believe Chairman Goodman characterized it very accurately. We are not adding anything new. Our policies have failed to keep pace with law. That doesn't mean our practices, our investigative strategies, our employee obligations haven't kept pace with law. So we are updating this portion to be in compliance so we can submit and receive grant funding. We are not adding something new or changing our practices.
What is the law that changed?
The addition of protected categories and detailing those out in the language of the policy.
In state law?
I believe federal law is, if I have not mistaken...
Federal law didn't change.
The county attorney's office is going to respond to that specific question. I'm not positioned to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
In addition, I should point out that although Mary Ellen has referenced VOCA grants, I believe it is much broader than VOCA grants. Most federal grants require this type of compliance, if you will. And in answer to one of Supervisor Kavanaugh's questions about opening, you know, potential more liability, actually, this may close some of the liability. When, when we have an EEOC complaint, someone is claiming harassment or unfair treatment, one of the things we have to file is what's called a position statement back with the EEOC. And what they want to see specifically, what are your policies, and do you prevent this type of activity to an individual? And so we're really trying to comply with those type of things. Your specific question was, who makes that determination? It's usually the court that tells us, or the EEOC initially, that says, "You have a right to sue now." So it's that policy. There's no specific bright line. A lot of it is based on the facts and the actions of the individual taken or perceived, taken, and then it's the EEOC and the courts that will ultimately determine whether or not that was a violation or not. So I hope that answers your question.
Okay. Thank you.
Super, or not Supervisor, what's your name? County Attorney Volker, there you go.
Chair, Chair Supervisor Kavanaugh. You'd specifically asked where in Arizona law this is found. It's found in Title 41, 1461 through 1467. Specifically, it's titled Article IV, Discrimination in Employment. That is where this is found explicitly in Arizona law. I'm sure there are other places, but that is the primary location where it's found.
So it deals with the gender issues?
It specifically mentions gender under discrimination and lawful practices under It includes race, color, religion, sex, age, natural word, national origin, excuse me, basis of disability, among other things. So obviously, that was a very brief perusal, but that is where you could look, so you're not...
Okay, so gender and, gender and sex are mentioned in the state law?
Sex is. I don't see gender specifically here, but I cannot, at this point, sitting here, tell you explicitly gender is, but sex certainly is.
Okay. Vice Chairman.
Supervisor, sorry.
I didn't pour over item 20 in great detail. Are there over 100 genders listed in this item?
In our policy, absolutely not. Our policy is broad. Essentially, if I were to simplify it for everybody, don't discriminate. I mean, that's really what it comes down to, and it says, "Don't discriminate specifically on these, but just don't discriminate when you're hiring, firing, promoting, demoting. Do it on the basis of the character of the person, not some other immutable characteristic." That's what this policy stands for.
And treat everybody with dignity.
Correct.
I look, I look at it, and I always come back to this. I say, you know, Penalt County is like a startup company, and we've come from very rural, we're becoming urbanized, we're becoming more professional. We've moved from a one-car garage to the three-car garage, now we're in a 100,000-square-foot warehouse, and we've got policies that are broad, and we need to put some rails on them. So we need to tighten things up and professionalize what we do. That's how I look at this.
And thank you for that characterization. The, as County Attorney Volker said, don't discriminate, don't, and I would add, as you have, treat people with respect. Evaluate people on the basis of their performance and their contributions, not based upon any other factor in the workplace, which is what we are concerned about with respect to this policy. Care and concern in valuing our employees.
All right, thank you. And so our policy already said...
Supervisor Miller has a question.
I'm sorry, I saw your hand go up, I thought you were pointing at me. Thank you, Mr. Miller. So our policy had already included this nondiscrimination. That was our policy. To get the money, we had to add the gender to get the VOCA and other grants. That's essentially the reason. My concern is we are setting up a maze of compliance in terms of, are we referring to you by your appropriate gender? Some of them are quite vulgar. I have a list of 170 here. So while we are appropriately dealing with someone who may choose that gender, we would be offending the rest of the room if we, if we use the, said the name of that gender out loud. So those are my concerns. If it's, if the reason, if we're, is because we need the money for VOCA, then just, that's it.
And Chairman Goodman, Vice Chairman McClure, Supervisor Kavanaugh, if I represented you today, the reason is to get money, then I have done you a disservice. I have mischaracterized this request. The timing of this policy change is because of some grant timelines, but the reason we are doing it is to be in compliance with the laws regarding discrimination and harassment, and to promote a workplace that is free of both.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Supervisor Miller, you had a question? Comment?
Comment. Thank you, Vice Chair. I just don't understand why we would handicap ourselves by not upgrading or staying abreast of the law and, and the requirements that are being asked of us. I mean, just as Supervisor McClure was saying, we're growing, things change, things change all the time. This is not the first policy we've updated. We'll continue to update policies as, as, as government evolves. I don't see it as a, that it's gonna, you know, send us into court tomorrow. Again, it's just keeping up with what's being prescribed as the law, so. And I wouldn't handicap, if we, we want to make sure that we have dollars for victims, we want to just make sure we're in compliance with, with the policies.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 20 as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Supervisor Goodman, aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pursuant to the rules, I'd like to explain my vote, Mr. Chairman.
I believe you have, but you may go ahead.
Genesis 127 states, "So God created humankind in His image. In the image of God He created them, male and female He created them." Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kavanaugh. Next, we have, lost my place. Next, we have item 6, Purchasing Division Report. Ms. Woods, are you still hanging out here?
Good morning, Chairman Goodman, Vice Chair McClure, members of the board. Angie Woods, I'm the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance, and I have the pleasure of presenting to you our Purchasing Division Report for August 21st of 2024. I hope to keep it very brief for you. The report includes one contract award recommendation for IFB 250529 for aggregate slurry and Portland cement with four suppliers. We are requesting for the board to approve one contract amendment for ROQ 241928 for airport planning and associated services. We are requesting two competition in practicable forms to be approved. The purchases are over $100,000. The report includes one purchase order change requiring approval for PO 250371, which is for the Combs and Kenworth Road Improvement Project. There are four cooperative purchase agreements that we have issued purchase orders for that we're making aware of in this report. And lastly, the board is requested to approve three cooperative purchasing agreement order, purchase orders over the amount of $250,000. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, I ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the Purchasing Division Report as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 I believe that's unanimous. Motion is approved. Thank you very much, Ms. Woods. Appreciate it. Item number seven is consent agenda. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. And I would ask, this is for items A through I, are there any items that the board wishes to pull? Hearing none. County manager? None. Members of the public?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller.
Just a quick question, because we have items U, V, W, and X. We're doing that separately because of outside counsel?
If they're pulled.
If they're pulled, only if they're pulled? Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Now, we have Mr. McGuire showing us the money there on that one.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear.
No, it's just in case there's an item to be pulled. So in that case, make it a motion for consent items A through AI, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve consent items A through AI as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Give me a second, I will catch up. At this time, I'm going to recess the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting and convene the Desert Vista Sanitary District Board of Directors' meeting. Sorry about that. And the Desert Vista Sanitary District Board of Directors has two items on it, their consent. Again, all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda is called. Are there any items that the board wishes to pull? wishes to pull? Hearing none. County manager? None. Public? Hearing none. May I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items A and B for the Desert Vista Sanitary District.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 I have the ayes. Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you very much. At this time, we will adjourn the Desert Vista Sanitary District Board of Directors Meeting and convene the, other thing here. The, we will convene the Flood Control District Board of Directors Meeting. Again, all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Are there any items that the board wishes to pull? Hearing none. County manager? Hearing none. Public that's quickly leaving. Any members from the public wish to pull an item? Hearing none. Make it a motion, please.
Chairman, that we approve the flood control consent items as presented?
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you very much. We'll, at this time, adjourn the Flood Control District Board of Directors Meeting and reconvene the Board of Director, the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting. Now, let's see. We are at item 10. It's a public hearing. The public hearing in discussion approval, disapproval of resolution number 2024-SUP-001-24. And I will let Mr. Bach explain this.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So SUP 00124, otherwise known as Papago Feeds. This is a request for a special use permit on a 3.3-acre parcel in a suburban ranch zoning district to allow hay and feed sales. Location here is southeast of Papago Road and Thunderbird Road. This is Supervisor District One, and their applicants are Colton and Jody Ivy. So this gives you a general location of, of the property here. It's southwest of Maricopa. Zooming in here in the more immediate environs, aerial photo. General vicinity. And this shows you the current zoning of the property here, going back to, looks like 71. And this shows you conceptual site plan here of the property. So this is a pretty minimal area of the property that will be utilized for the hay sales. Looking north, south from the property, east down the street, and west down the same. So comprehensive plan validates the proposed rural residential may be oriented towards lifestyles such as equestrian and such, so this fits into that. It doesn't generate any excessive noise, smoke, fumes, dust, or glare, and staff is not aware of any items of opposition at time the report was written and afterwards. So the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation for, was for approval with the aforementioned 13 stipulations that are fully explained in your staff reports. And staff would be happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Miller?
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I just want to address, you can come forward. I did, the 13 stipulations, are you, have you read those, and are you kind of aware of all of that?
Yes, we are.
Looks a little spendy to me, but if it's worth it to you, I mean, because I really have a hard time understanding landscape irrigation plans and, and, you know, plant sites and, and ADA parking and traffic studies and all that type of stuff. So that will require some professionals, you know, you'll have to, you'll have to hire somebody to provide you that stuff. And I just wanted to make sure that the applicant is aware of that.
Sorry. We've already done the traffic study. We've done most everything. We're not moving any land. We're not digging. We're not moving any, anything like that. The ADA parking we're working on right now. So yes, we have looked at all 13 stipulations.
I just, I don't want it to be a surprise. And so, anyway, that's why I wanted to bring it up. So thank you for attending, and best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Sorry, they want...
Oh, yeah.
Jody Ivy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm Becky Taylor. We're both co-owners.
Thank you. I have a quick question for you.
Yes.
Can you, like, herk a bale of hay up and throw it in a truck?
I can. Absolutely. Absolutely. We're getting our guns built up.
Okay. This, oh, thank you very much. And this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Any members of the public wish to speak to this item? Seeing, oh, here we go. Seeing one. I was going to call that in a minute here, but that's, that's true. Okay. You, I, I'm sorry. I'm not paying attention. You must be Doris Levy, just to guess.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, my name is Doris Levy. I go by Dory, and I live on lot 86 in Thunderbird Farms, which is at 12148 North Laverne Lane, and have six horses. I definitely welcome a feed and hay store to the area because it will save me 20 miles round trip driving, going to the feed store, getting enough hay for just a week in the back of my pickup. So that's going to save a lot of gas money for me. They're competitively priced compared to the end of town, the feed store that's in Maricopa. They've been very accommodating on loading the hay into my car, and, yeah, they can definitely lift those veils of hay. But we've kind of gotten it down to a science of just putting, they're putting it on a pallet and loading it in the back of my truck with a forklift so my husband can unload it when I get home. Because, you know, when we talk about ADA, I'm not able to lift those veils anymore due to some, some back issues and stuff like that. So, very welcome in our community. It was disappointing when Mountain View Feeds closed down because they retired and moved to a different area. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Paula and Harvey McNatt that ran that store. I've been out in Thunderbird Farms since 2006, and definitely we've been needing a store to replace them. They used to be on Papago Road between Brewer and White. So, anyway, I'm in support.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Appreciate it. And I have to say, years ago, I was delivering, no, you're nothing, delivering meals to an elderly lady in Saddle Brook, and the bags were pretty heavy because it was six days' worth of frozen foods and a hot meal. And I said, you want me to carry those in for you? She goes, I can carry those. Don't worry about that. Says, I used to be able to herk a bale of hay up onto a truck. And I said, yeah. And she's like 85. I said, how long ago is that? She says, oh, like 40, 50 years ago. But I still, you know, I could do it. So, anyway, thank you very much. Any other members from the public wish to speak to this item? Okay, hearing and seeing none. I'll close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve as presented with 13 stipulations.
Good job. Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Supervisor Goodman, are you still there?
Yeah, I said aye.
Oh, couldn't hear you. Sorry about that. Thank you very much. That sounds unanimous. Motion is approved. Thank you very much. Off to item number 11. This is a public hearing in discussion approval, disapproval of resolution number 2024-PZ-PA-004-24. This is item 11. Item 11 and 12 will be discussed together, and this is going to be, Ms. Riley, how are you today?
I'm good. How are you doing?
Fine, thank you.
Well, I think it's still morning. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. My name is Kendall Riley. My title is Planner. I'm here to present to you case PZ-PA-004-24 and PZ-029-23. And it's titled, Ironwood and Pima Retail. This proposal is for a minor comprehensive plan amendment and a rezone for commercial uses. This will amend the Santan Valley area plan from rural living to suburban neighborhood and rezone from SR to C1. Approximate parcel size is 5.8 acres. Location is the northeast corner of Ironwood Drive and East Pima Road. Owners is VV Mercy LLC and the Levitt Trust. Agent is Brennan Ray, and he is present today. Here's a county map showing the approximate location of the proposal marked by the red star. Here's a vicinity map showing the surrounding zoning of the proposal. To the west, we have the jurisdiction of the town of Queen Creek. To the south, we have C3, general commercial. And to the north and the east is residential zoning. Here's a case map showing the notification boundary of residence in proximity of the proposal. Here's an area map showing the surrounding development patterns in the area. This was the site plan provided by the applicant. There will be two access points off of North Ironwood Road and one off of East Pima Road. Here's some directional images showing onto site and surrounding. So this minor comprehensive plan amendment is needed for the uses proposed. Current designation is rural living. Proposed designation changes to suburban neighborhood to provide commercial services on a major arterial road. Some items in consideration is its close proximity to the new LG plant and other commercial uses. This will bring commercial restaurants and retail. No adverse impacts have been identified by county staff, and we have received one letter in opposition of the project. It should be in your staff report packet. They just had concerns with the possibility of drive-through commercial coming in that area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of both cases, PZ-PA-004-24, with zero stipulations, and PZ-029-23 with 11 stipulations. Is there any questions for staff?
Any questions from the board? Hearing seeing none. Thank you very much. The applicant is here. Mr. Ray?
Good morning, Vice Chair, members of the board. Brennan Ray, 1850 North Central, here on behalf of the proposed developer. I have a full presentation that I'm more than happy to go through, should you wish it. But we have worked closely with staff on the, on the plan that is before you. Grateful for their recommendation for approval. Worked, obviously, with the Planning and Zoning Board to get their recommendation for approval. As we've gone through the process, we haven't heard from neighbors. I understand there was a letter in the packet. But we, again, I can go into a lot more details if necessary, but we would request your approval in accordance with recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Does anyone care for more information? Supervisor Goodman?
Yes, sir.
Do you care for any further detail?
This is one resulting that I'm in favor of. This is taking residential and turning it into commercial rather than reverse it, which we have been doing a lot lately. And we all know this, what the numbers are. We're losing about 1.3 billion, maybe more, in retail sales tax. This makes so much sense. I would tell Brennan and the developer, the big need we have out here is sit-down restaurants. Pay after you eat. That was one of the complaints one of the citizens said. And so I'm in favor of it, gentlemen.
Thank you, Supervisor Goodman. Surprise, right? Okay, let's see. So, thank you, Mr. Ray. This is a public hearing, so I will now open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this item? I have no cards. See, I am paying attention. No cards. Okay. Hearing and seeing none from the public. I will close the public hearing and, and ask for a motion. We're going, we presented these together in tandem, but we are going to vote on them separately. May I get a motion for item 11, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item 11 as presented. With no stipulations.
Very well. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you. Item 12. Make it a motion, please.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 12 as presented with 11 stipulations.
Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. There we go. Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Thank you, Mr. Ray. 13. This is a public hearing in discussion approval, disapproval of resolution number 2024-SUP-035-23. And we have Mr. Bach again. Surprise.
So next, here, SUP 03523. This is a special use permit request for a new wireless communications facility. Overall site size is a bit over 12 acres. It's located at the southeast corner of Superstition Mountain Drive in US Highway 60. Gilligan Gold Canyon LLC is your owner, and Scott Hopper is your applicant. This is the general location here, just southeast of Apache Junction. Zooming in on the unusual-shaped property here that contains a BASH's shopping center. This gives you a good aerial perspective here, and the general location of that proposed cell tower, you'll see later in the site plan. It's basically in the eastern portion of that highlighted area. You'll see to the south, you have, I believe it's a water treatment facility. There's a golf course to the southeast. Then you have some homes after a buffered area to the northeast. So this is your vicinity map showing the overall zoning and characteristics of the area. And this is a conceptual site plan, so this gives you a little more detail here of where this would be placed. Initially, the applicant proposed to, to place it somewhat to the southwest, where it would be very near a building, and that brought some concern up with staff because it did meet the separation we like to see away from buildings should the wireless facility fall. So this shows you looking north from approximately the proposed location, looking to the south, and then to the east. You'll notice some power lines here, short distance away, and the superstitions in the background. And then this is looking to the west. There's a small dumpster facility, I believe they're part of the BASH's complex. So items to consider here is that traffic with wireless is typically very minimal, of course. And so, at the time of the writing of the report, staff had received about 34 items of opposition and 87 of support. You may have received some handout here from, it's been trickling in even up to this morning. But the bulk of that here was already present here when this was heard with P&amp;Z. So the lack of this facility would adversely impact the community and leaving a potential communications gap, and that's been expressed by a number of residents in the area. The applicant has demonstrated that a proposed wireless has been moved to a more favorable location, a good distance from habitable structures, as well as from homes to the northeast. Planning and zoning commission recommendation was for approval with the 16 stipulations contained in your report. And staff would be happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Bach. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Sertie?
I have more questions than I've ever had on an item before. So, what, how close is the nearest residence?
If I could back, back up here, it's probably, I would venture to say maybe 300, 400 feet to the northeast.
Feet, not yards. So 100 yards.
Correct.
And you had a picture of the power lines. Is this taller than those power lines?
Not knowing the exact height of the power lines, but I would just speculate that it's approximately the same, perhaps a little bit taller.
And would there be any kind of camouflage? And would there be any kind of camouflage masking on this?
Yes, this is, is typical, what we're seeing lately, I believe they refer to it as a mono elm. It has a shape overall of a pine tree, but it has deciduous leaves and that provides pretty good stealth characteristics, so concealing the antenna arrays within it.
Okay, I'm gonna go into difficult questions after this, but why here? Obviously, this person will get monetary compensation for allowing this to be placed there, such as like a billboard, et cetera, right? They'll get a monthly lease, a yearly lease, how does this work?
So the specifics, we don't, you know, have the details of that, that's not, you know, something we're, we're, you know, made privy to as far as what the arrangements with the owner.
Supervisor Serdy, the applicant is here too, so he can...
Okay. And after, as of right now, there's nothing across to the south in the state land. How difficult is it to put something like this on the state land? Is, is it to have to be a sale or could it be a lease? Because there's nobody living to the south in the state land.
Yeah, correct, and I'd rather, if I may defer to the applicant with that, because I take it that they've ventured to look at a lot of these things.
So the other questions I'll have is, and as you saw, it's been about two to one in favor of this, and although the momentum, momentum right now is opposed. And most people do agree there's a need for this, but folks are legitimately concerned about the effects of 5G. Why is it 5G? Why not 4G? Is everything gonna be 5G from here on out? This will be for the presenter, of course. And will this be obsolete? Are they gonna go to 6G after this? And are there any, what studies are there on people that live very close to these things? It may not be available yet because they're just coming. I know that in the past, even just a plain old power line were causing problems, or just electricity. And they say that if you put your cellphone to your ear all day long, you could get brain cancer, et cetera. So I would like some questions on that and if need be, do we need to get a report on what the long-term effects of this might be? So, so those are, I had about five questions there, so I would, if there's no more to you, I would rather, I would like to hear from the applicant.
I believe Supervisor, Mr. Keller, that's who I really mean.
Mr. Chairman, in response to Supervisor Serdy's last request regarding health effects and so forth, you are prohibited from considering anything related to health effects when permitting cell towers. That's under the Federal Communications Act. There's a prohibition act. You are not allowed to consider any of those kinds of factors at all. So you're prohibited.
Even if we have a gut feeling that it's not a good thing?
That is correct.
How do you know what my gut feelings are?
The federal government told me.
Okay.
Okay, so any other questions from the board? Hearing none, the applicant is here, and I believe you're not, oh, Michelle, yes. Johnson, yes.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. My name is Michelle Johnson and I'm here on behalf of Sun State Towers and Verizon Wireless. I do have Steve Kennedy here with me and he is an RF expert, so he can answer a lot of your questions. And I, obviously, I don't want to take up a ton of your time. You have a lot to go through. I think staff did an excellent job of presenting the project. While this particular location has, you know, only been in the works, oops. This is it, right? Oh, there we go, sorry. Perfect, thank you. So this is what it will look like. When we do our photo sims, we take existing sites that we've built and we use that site for a photo sim. So this is an existing site that we've built elsewhere. To answer your question, this will be a 70-foot mono elm. The manufacturer of these is out of Tucson and they developed a tree to be as realistic as it can in the desert. So some of the things that we do, because we understand that this is, you know, something that people don't want to look at, that, you know, they don't necessarily, they want the cellphone coverage because everybody wants to use their phone, but they don't want to look at the towers in the neighborhoods. So we try really hard to work with the manufacturer of the stealthing to provide something that at least is palatable. Or when you drive by, like, I personally never recommend a palm tree because those fall all the time, one. Two, they look horrible and who are you trying to kid? You've got basically antennas with, you know, leaves sticking out of it. So with the mono elm, the stealthing is much better. It's not like a pine tree where you're gonna put the antennas and then it's the most narrow at the top. You actually can keep the antennas within the branches and then they actually stealth the antennas themselves. So we do feel that this location is the best location in this area. To answer your question on state land, we have reached out to state land multiple times. They typically do not encumber their land when it is vacant and that particular piece of land is actually currently being negotiated for sale, so they will not allow us to go on it. And I don't know how long the sale of that land would take, but Brian Sparks at the Arizona Department, he's who we've spoken with on it, so feel free if you'd like to check with him. We've reached out to multiple people in the area. We worked closely with the neighboring HOA and with the BASHs and the owners of this parcel to come up with a location here. Originally, when we brought the idea to them, we did suggest a type of a monument to put in this area. BASHs said that they would not support that and therefore, Mr. Gilligan said that he would not support that. BASHs also did not want any type of facilities on their roof. So this is, you know, when, when you build a tower, you have to have somebody who's gonna lease you land, you have to have a design that they're going to approve and ultimately have to be able to, you know, get it through planning and zoning. So, you know, we have worked closely with the planning department to come up with a location that everybody was okay with, with the design that everybody was okay with. We worked with the HOA. You know, I do understand that there are other groups in the area that don't want wireless. You know, the HOA did send out a survey asking, and 63% of the people want better communication. You know, we're never gonna be able to make everybody happy while providing wireless service to people. You know, I would ask the people who are in opposition of this, are you thinking about why the people that want this, want this? You know, perhaps they work at home and their only way of making a call is their cellphone. 71% of Americans only have a cellphone. So, you know, if you're in an area and you work from home and you only have a cellphone and you have really bad coverage, you can't do your job. So then what do you do? How often can you go to the, you know, local Starbucks or, you know, to do your work? And then, you know, the largest people who still have a landline are over the age of 65. So perhaps those people aren't working, so they never thought about that. They never thought about, okay, so to do my job, I need my cellphone. You know, the other thing that pertains to everybody is safety. 80% of all 911 calls are made from a cellphone. You know, better coverage just helps everybody. You know, it promotes better business. You know, I know that Pinal County wants to promote better business, well, better coverage is going to do that. So I don't have anything else. I certainly can go through my slides really quick, but I don't want to take up too much of your time.
I don't think anyone has an issue with cell coverage. I mean, I drive that way.
Sure.
I typically have coverage through Gold Canyon. I then lose it, and then at Florence Junction, there's one over in the foothills there. I then have it at Florence Junction, I then lose it again on the way to Florence, I pick it up again in Florence, so I've got two dead spots in between. Would it help those dead spots there or is it only helping Gold Canyon?
Steve will look at the map and...
Okay.
And he can answer that for you.
And nobody has a problem with the one in Florence Junction because nobody lives there, so.
So, a couple of why this also makes sense is, you know, we wanted to show you also, you have towers that are not camouflage that are in the area that, quite honestly, they don't look, you know, do you really want to see that? So, you know, the same SRP poles, so those SRP poles are approximately 80 feet tall and the tower's gonna be 70 feet. So you've already disrupted that, you know, visual back there.
So Acting Chairman, I don't want to take over the meeting, but can we go into what's the difference between 5G, 4G, and are there studies out there?
I'm gonna let Steve take this one.
And then if you could do that coverage of those dead areas I talked about.
Let me get to his slides.
Good afternoon, good morning, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Supervisors. My name's Steve Kennedy, I'm a radio frequency engineering consultant. I have been doing this for 35 years, so I've got a little bit of understanding within what's going on within the network. So I was tasked with looking at a justification why this site is needing to be built and, Mr. Chair, Supervisor, C. Albel, I have sections in this deck about the questions you have, so if you'll give me a few moments, let me go over some background and then I'll be able to get in and answer those questions. So two reasons why a carrier builds a site, coverage and capacity. Coverage is the ability for the transmitter and receiver in this mobile phone to be able to talk to a transmitter receiver at a cell site. That is the connection, that is coverage. When you do not have coverage, there's no connection made or the communications link is dropped. The other reason is capacity, and that's one of the reasons this, this site is being built. Capacity is the ability to process calls. I relate that to a water pipe. If there's a water pipe and there's one person connected to that water pipe, they have 100% of that capacity. If there's two people connected to that pipe, they each have 50% of the capacity. If four connected, they each have 25%. If eight are connected, they each have 12.5% of capacity of that water line. So same concept works in a radio channel. If you imagine a radio channel as a water pipe, all the users that are pulling water or pulling bandwidth from that channel, they're utilizing capacity of that channel. And then more people that are connected, the less water or RF or capacity per user there is. So that's the reason for building capacity sites. Objective is to provide coverage, coverage in commercial and suburban areas such as well as the golf course, also to provide coverage along Superstition Freeway and South Superstition Mountain Drive. 96% of Americans own a cellphone, 57% of Americans, and this is a little older data, rely exclusively on cellphones and 84% or more of 911 emergency calls are made from wireless devices. This is a 70-foot mono elm, the Verizons will be the anchor tenant and their antenna center line, which is the middle of the antenna, will be at 66 feet. Users in the area experience lats of service and a significant gap in service, significant amount of growth in Gold Canyon causing more wireless usage on the wireless networks. Many users' mobiles reporting low-quality connections from multiple carriers. Here's the site. Okay, so the distances from the existing, or the proposed site to all the existing Verizon sites, the closest site is to the southeast at 1.69 miles. Then there's one 6.52 miles away. There's a few more that are 1.82, 2.41. So we've got a decent amount of distance between the sites. Once again, this is a capacity site. Mr. Chair, Supervisor Serdy, which specific area were you asking about?
Do you know where Florence Junction is? It's probably the way you came, right? You came through Gold Canyon and you turned right at, so there's a tower there. It's good, great service there, but before you get that, you could have some laxes there. And also, these are all Verizon, I don't have Verizon, yet I have good coverage there. Is it shared with other networks?
So these are Verizon transmitting equipment located on these sites, so AT&amp;T will have sites in the area as well, as well as T-Mobile.
So there's more even than these, because I have AT&amp;T, I don't have Verizon, so.
We could, I'll be able to get to that point of what Verizon or what AT&amp;T and T-Mobile's networks look like in the area, if you let me get on through the slides.
Okay.
All right? Okay, Verizon cell mappers. So this is a third-party source of information, crowdsourced data, where mobiles actually report back to servers what kind of coverage they're getting within the area. Now, this is for Verizon, so we can see the sites that we spoke of in the last, I spoke of in the last slide, and we can see in the area that we've got a lot of below neg 105 to neg 140 coverage, i.e. the red. So if you look on the upper-left legend, you're gonna see the dark green, the orange and the red means that we're not going to have good quality service. If we have the dark green, we're gonna have good to marginal service outdoors, but we start getting the orange and red, we're not gonna have any service at all. This is another crowdsourced data for Gold Canyon, so we can see that down within Gold Canyon to the southeast, we're getting good coverage, but up around the area, the BASHs, we're not getting as good a coverage. So these are mobile reports from various phones that have loaded apps on them and that has thin clients that report data back to servers. This is RSRP, reference signal received power. So this is what we plot in digital networks, and it looks like somebody got crazy with the crayons, but, but there's some, there's some math behind this. This is a propagation modeling tool called ATOL. What it does, it takes into account terrain, terrain changes, it takes into account clutter, types of trees, types of shrubs, is it water? Do we have houses? Do we have commercial buildings? All these other things it takes into account, does a whole lot of math and comes up and shows. What green means to a 95% probability is neg 85 is indoor probable indoor service. What yellow means is in-vehicle service and what red means is on-street service. And we can see that this site to the, to the northeast and to the southwest, as well as along the highway, we're getting some in-vehicle and some on-street coverage within the area that there are definitely houses and cars. This is the proposed, so I turned on the transmitter within the site that's proposed and it shows the difference in what coverage is going to look like. So we now, we have outdoor or on-street, in-vehicle, and now we have indoor services. So this is a zoom-in of the area, so I just, I just zoomed a little closer to kind of get an idea, maybe some of the street detail, but you can see the differences between what's going on before and after. Okay, to answer some of your questions about 4G, 5G and all these studies, I want to do some basics. There's two types of radio waves, energy waves. One is ionizing and one is non-ionizing. Ionizing is things that actually photons are passing through your body and that can change human DNA. These two types are gamma rays and X-rays, all right? So we can talk about X-rays. When you go to the dentist, what happens? You gotta get X-rays. They set you in the chair, they cover you with a lead-over coat. Why do they do that? They do that because they do not want to overexpose you to those X-rays. And the person actually steps out of the room, the room is a Faraday cage, so it's keeping all of that RF inside that room, person steps out so they don't get exposure to that. Non-ionizing are things that do not affect DNA. If you've ever been on your phone for a while, you notice it gets warm. Why is it getting warm? That's because the amplifier is doing two things. One is generating the radio wave, the second thing it's generating is heat. That is the only side effect from non-ionizing, heat. Same reason why a light bulb pops and you change it real quick, you put your hand on it, it's hot. It's because that light bulb is generating light and heat. Same thing with an amplifier in a phone or an amplifier up on the tower. Examples of non-ionizing are Wi-Fi access points and routers. We have a Wi-Fi access point in this room, it's generating RF all the time. It's happening, it's going, things are moving along. We have Bluetooth headsets, cellphones, light bulbs, wireless baby monitors, TV remotes. There's specific absorption rate, that's what the FCC has studied, and the first radio transmitter went into service in 1906. I looked it up. So we've been having radio coverage since 1906, so this is not anything new. It's basically the difference between 4G and 5G is the difference between a BMW 7 Series and a Volkswagen Bug. It's a technology. The radio behind the technology is still the same. The laws of physics have not changed, God has kept it the same. So... So, if the laws of physics have not changed, and the radio waves still work the same way, what technologies are behind it, the data transfer happening, is no different from one technology to the next. It's the same thing. Now, 50% of the specific absorption rate is what I've got right here by my ear. I'm getting 50% of the federally allowed general public limit. The antennas on that site, they're far away. They're 170, 80 feet up. I'm getting maybe, probably, less than 10% more, to be around 5% of the FCC's general public limit. So, what is the general public limit? So, a specific absorption rate is the limit by which the FCC said, hey, this is as much exposure we can handle from RF frequencies. And then they knocked that down by a factor of 10 and created the occupational limit. Occupational limit, somebody goes up on the roof of this building, if there's antennas on top of this building, and a guy goes up to fix the air conditioner, he doesn't know about antennas, he doesn't understand that. So, we have to do things to protect and make sure he doesn't stay within a certain area close to the antennas for more than a specific amount of time. That's occupational. General public. I'm walking down the street. I walk right by a tower. I don't know, I'm not paying attention. I'm not seeing any antennas. I don't see the antennas on the side of the building, or on the side of that water tank that's just down the street. This is general public. I walk by, I don't know, I might stand there an hour, I might have a cup of coffee, I don't know. Anything can happen. But what the FCC did is they lowered that specific absorption rate by a factor of 50 and said, this is the limit by which...
Vice Chairman, can I ask questions at will?
Yes.
So, I've heard cell towers referred to as microwave towers. Is that a misnomer?
Well, microwave comes into the wavelength, the frequency that's being utilized. The higher the frequency, the smaller the wavelength.
So, there are possibly microwave towers. Are you familiar with Havana syndrome?
There's microwave towers all over the place. They're everywhere. This is not something that's new. This is a path where, when a communications carrier cannot get fiber to the site, they use a microwave dish, which is a round dish that's on the side of the tower that creates a point-to-point directional connection.
And you can fry small animals in a microwave. I mean, and you're familiar with Havana syndrome, where supposedly our enemies beam microwaves at our diplomats' hotel rooms, and it messes people up.
Yes, sir, I'm familiar with that. That's at higher frequencies than what we're doing, and much higher power than what we're doing within these transmitters.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Did you have more questions?
No, I didn't have permission to interrupt, Will, though, you said.
Okay, okay. Just checking.
Okay, next slide. So, this is AT&amp;T cell mapper, so this is showing the location of the closest AT&amp;T sites, and we can see that from this data that AT&amp;T has even worse service than Verizon does within the area. So, it's, being this is a tower that multiple operators can co-locate on, AT&amp;T is probably going to be coming up pretty quick and wanting to place some antennas on the tower as well. This is open signal, same thing. We've got some coverage down to the southeast towards South Gold Canyon, but up around the areas where the Bosch's is, the quality that the mobiles are reporting within that area for AT&amp;T subscribers is low. This is T-Mobile cell mapper. We can see the same thing. There's a site to the southeast, but up around Bosch's, and then going into the northern, northwestern side, towards Superstation Mountain, we're not getting as much coverage. Here's T-Mobile. Once again, mobile's reporting the same thing. They're getting good coverage up towards the northwest and towards the southeast, but within the area of the proposed, it's pretty bad. So, I stand for questions.
So, are there any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, for you, do we have any cards on this?
We do. I have seven presently.
And are they pro, or for, or against, or do you know?
I will know momentarily. They are all opposed.
Well, having dealt with this cell tower issue before, there's some legal questions I want to kind of talk to legal counsel about it. I'd suggest that, I'd like to make a motion that we go into the executive session.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? We're in executive session. We're out of executive session. And just for the record, Supervisor Goodman has left the building.
So, he won't be back?
Just like Elvis. Gone. Yep. So, okay, we have now, the presenters have done, this is a public hearing, and I will now open the public hearing, and I have seven cards here, and I will start with, good gosh, I got new glasses, I still can't read. George Katambe, did I pronounce that correctly?
Katambe.
Oh, well, okay, you know, I'm close, okay.
My name is Dr. George Katambe. I am a retired chronic pain specialist from Northern California, and I'm really happy to be here in Arizona. And one of the reasons I'm happy to be here in Arizona is because of the peace that I find in the great vistas of Superstation Mountain. It's a unique place, and I won't speak about the health aspects of living in a unique place, nor will I speak about the new correlations that are found in quantum mechanics and the new look at physics. What I will say to you is that, I will tell you a story about coming from Scottsdale and Mayo Clinic yesterday. As I was coming down Shea, which doesn't really have the natural beauty of Superstation Mountain, I noticed that you saw nothing to obstruct your view. What you saw was this beautiful vista of distance and space and peace. My concern is, when I look out my door, which is on South Las Mananitas Trail, which looks straight towards the shopping center and Bosch's, I see a nice skyline. I see nothing that obstructs my peace, my vista. I see nothing that breaks our HOA regulations. That is called the new neuroscience, which is science, and it does have something to do with our health, but I guess we don't talk about health here. What I am talking about, though, is what's going to happen to my property value if you have this 70-foot tower obstructing your view.
Thank you, Mr. Katambe.
Right. Thank you.
I'm pleased to state your name and where you're from, generally.
Okay, my name is Martin Toma. I live in Gold Canyon. 15 years as a radio frequency engineer. The last five of those years I spent as a field service engineer installing the towers. I also have a real estate license since 2019. I'm here to talk about, personally speaking, my own experience working as an RF engineer. I suffered a lot of health issues, and I know we're not supposed to talk about it, but I suffered major health issues. That's the reason why I got out of the industry. What I'd like to say is that, in terms of improving coverage, we do want coverage improved, but there's a couple of things that the attorney stated that were incorrect. For example, she said that there was a survey sent. The survey that was sent was only sent to a limited number of people. I live less than one mile away from where the cell tower is supposed to be installed, and I did not get the survey. She says 63% of the people say they want better coverage, but were they asked whether they want a cell tower installed? Better coverage could be accomplished by a number of means. In my home right now, in my current role, I am required to have 24-hour coverage, and I have no problems where I live, because I'm a manager and I need to be connected to my company and my colleagues. So, with a combination of the cellphone coverage that I currently have, as well as the Wi-Fi calling, I am able to be in contact all the time, connected, rather, I should say. If we have repeater systems installed, those repeater systems will accomplish the same thing that an 80-foot tower will accomplish. There was a lot of things that this gentleman said, Mr. Kennedy. I would just like to point out that bringing an expert to talk on behalf of a cellphone company, RF expert, is like bringing somebody from Marlboro to talk about the benefits of smoking cigarettes. I mean, this is the same sort of situation here. It took from the 1920s to the early 1990s for people to realize that cigarettes were bad for your health. The data is now coming out to show that there is major concerns in terms of radio frequency signals, let alone 5G. Now, the towers that he mentioned also, I'd like to state that it's a known fact that these towers cover anywhere from a three-mile to five-mile radius. If we could look at some of the, one of the pictures that he brought up, he showed an area where it was red. I live in that area, and I get coverage in that area. So, the data is skewed. Anybody can come up here and present some data, and when he says, when he answered your question, Mr. Sertie, he said that it was a lot higher frequency. Did he have proof to show that it was a lot higher frequency? Where's the evidence? I mean, the people, you know, just because a person claims that they're an expert, and they're working for a company like Verizon, billions of dollars, this is in their favor. I'd like to state that, to answer your question, sir, when I was in industry, if a company leases a cell tower out to a landowner, that landowner can stand to make anywhere from $10,000 to $50,000 a month.
Thank you, Mr. Toma.
In addition, the cellphone tower...
Your time is up, sir.
Sir, forgive me.
Your time is up, sir.
They can rent out a...
Your time is up, sir.
$10,000 to $50,000 per spot.
Your time is up, sir.
It's all about the money. It's quick.
No applause, please. All right. Mr. Kajowski, I'm sorry if I butchered that, but...
Am I allowed to give my time back to Martin? Is that allowed to do? So, he can finish?
No.
No.
No?
No. Well, I'm not an expert like Martin and the doctor gentleman that came up here before, but, and I know we're not supposed to talk about health, but there has to be more studies made before this thing gets put in. I mean, it's just, it's horrible, and I tend to believe Martin a lot more than the engineer that's came up here before. Thank you.
What was his name?
Thank you. Mr. Kajowski, could you please?
I'm sorry?
You state your name and where you're from.
Oh, I'm sorry. John Kajowski, Gold Canyon, Arizona.
Thank you, sir. Kenneth Collins.
Hi there.
Could, could I, please?
My name's Kenneth Collins. I live in Gold Canyon, Arizona.
You can move the mic down, so you don't have to yell up to the...
Hold on, okay. I love to yell up. No, I'm kidding. I actually worked for Verizon Wireless for many, many years. I went through analogs, 3G, 4G, and finished with 5G. 5G is not like 4G. I'm sure they've kind of explained that to you. It's very different. It uses the millimeter waves, which he discussed briefly, and it travels quite a bit faster. 5G does not require a large cell tower to provide services. Many urban areas carry support, or can support, a huge cell site. Actually, I'm sorry, many urban areas cannot support a huge cell tower, so smaller cells are used. These are used on utility poles, telephone poles, et cetera. They're called small cells. They're about a foot to two feet high, and maybe about a foot wide. And they can be used to directionalize the 5G in different areas, so you don't necessarily have to have a ginormous cell tower. In terms of aesthetics and site maintenance, many carriers can use one cell tower. As you've mentioned, they make a bundle. They make a killing monthly if they're renting it. And it's not just Verizon, it's T-Mobile, it's AT&amp;T. They all can stack up on the site. They're not responsible for the base of this. So, the aesthetics on the base are really ugly. If you go down to Tomahawk and 60 and take a good look at that particular cell site, it's pathetic. It's the little tree leaves are bent over, and it's falling apart. They've melted, and it's ugly. So, that is, that is the future of this cell site. Those lovely little branches and little plastic things aren't going to last very long. Okay. The walls are graffiti canvases. So, on the bottom of those cell sites, if it's not fenced in, they have walls, and the walls are just, you know, a canvas for the tweakers and the graffiti canvas. Yeah, I mentioned the drive-by cell tower on Tomahawk and 60. Just, as you go by, take a look at that. It's really, it'll give you a fair idea what this cell site will look like in a year or two. There are other ways of bringing 5G technology to this, to our community. We really should look at these. It's more than possible. It exists in other cities, states, and countries. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mary Ann Frias? Did I say that correctly? Freeze, Frias?
Either way, I answer to a lot of things.
You'll answer to Mary Ann. Well, thank you for coming.
Mary Ann Freeze, I live in Gold Canyon. Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I am opposed to the proposed cell tower's location, driving to Baja, just the whole aesthetics of the community. All right, we have our beautiful little shopping center that they keep up very, very nicely. I just can't imagine this big ugly thing being behind it that close to the stores. I do shop at Baja's, and I do shop at the other stores, and I'm just, and there's a parking lot back there. I think it's just too close to everything, to the shopping center. The whole aesthetics, I think, will be ruined of that community. I am concerned about the possible health issues. I don't understand why our, we're not allowed to speak about that. That just sounds like something that is against the Fifth Amendment, but maybe I'm wrong. I'd like to object to our speaker for the, for the cell tower, the age of 65 having, and older having, the landlines. I've had a landline, I've lived in Gold Canyon for a lot of years, and always had a landline because maybe the cellphone just didn't work, or I wanted, or the battery wouldn't last that long, and I was on a long-distance call, or I was on a conference call that needed my direct attention. I didn't need to be blocked out or stopped, so I object to the age discrimination there. I was wondering if the sewer plant, since that's a utility anyway, maybe they would object to this cell tower going there. I like the idea of not having it, because I think they are an ugly thing to any community, but I was wondering that, but maybe it's because of golf course there. I don't know, but I hate to ruin our area. Let's see, what else? I did speak to the contractor at one time, and he said that certain areas probably won't get the transmission because of the small mountains that are around, sorry, small mountains that are around that area, that it might work, and it might not work very well. So, it just didn't make sense, common sense to me, that it would be there, and yet people that live off of Don Donnelly might not be able to get the transmission because of the small mountains there. Let's see, what else? I'd just like to say thank you very much, and I hope that you'll respectfully listen to us and help us out here.
Thank you, Ms. Freeze. Dieter O'Neill. Dieter O'Neill.
She left.
Oh, she did, okay. Thank you. All right. Dieter O'Neill. Dieter O'Neill.
She left.
Oh, she did. Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Walt. Back again.
Honorable Vice Chair, Audible Board Members and Staff, good morning. My name is Glenn Walt. I reside in Gold Canyon, and I am here representing the Adobe Organization, as well as people who are not Adobe members, and personally, my wife and I, who live in the shadow, or will be if this tower is built. We're all familiar with the name Harold Christ. He came here in the nineteen seventies wanting to develop a golf resort, and he did, and he selected a spot, and I'm going to use the words that he says, "This is a very unique place." Quote, "Today, that part of the county is known as Gold Canyon, one of the most recognizable communities in Pinale, in light of its proximity to the magnificent views and offices of well-known portions of the county's landscape, such as Superstition Mountains and Dinosaur Mountain." End of quote. It is really a special place. And for all the thousands of people who started back here in the nineteen seventies who have attempted to keep Gold Canyon, Gold Canyon, there is something significant about the God-created Superstition Mountains. There's a lot of beautiful places in Pinale County, but Superstition Mountains has a unique place. We have been trying, Adobe, other organizations, to keep it neat, clean, its magnificent views, and its aesthetics. This tower will destroy the aesthetics of Gold Canyon. As you're coming in west into Gold Canyon, right where you come into Gold Canyon will be this tower. And let me tell you about that tower. All you have to do is ride down Tomahawk, and you'll see what a tower looks like in about a year and a half. They do not put back the leaves. They let it, and it's all these other organizations with all their towers, and that's exactly what it's going to look like. Lastly, I've been in law enforcement for a long time, I'm still in, as an expert witness in court cases throughout the United States. An FBI report came out, and it said, it talked about stealing a copper wire, and it specifically states, and one of the targets is cellular towers. And the reason is, from the bottom of that tower to the very top is a huge copper wire, which makes it all work. And those are targets for criminals. We don't want criminals in Gold Canyon. We want to stay the way we are. Already, they, they come and they steal the solar batteries out of lights you don't find anymore. We don't want to bring in any criminal element, copper wire especially that amount, and they can take it down and get it out within minutes. And so I respectfully ask you, please listen to us. All I'm asking for is the location. That's it. Let's just go back to the drawing board, sit down, work it out, we'll work out together. Maybe we can find another hunk of land. This is not the place to put the tower. Yes, we need communications. My wife, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Walt. Are there any others that care to speak to the board on this item?
Vice Chair, Board. My name is Dave Coward. I reside in Gold Canyon, and I'm speaking on behalf of our, our group there, Gold Canyon Community, Inc. And we, we actually support the need for this facility. Now, whether it's this particular facility or not, but what I can say is, there is a need, because that, there is a dead spot there. And there's a lot of small businesses in that, in that shopping center that rely on cell service, and it's degraded at times. And just like the analogy of the, the water line, when there's a lot of people in that shopping center area, I mean, you can really have some degradation of, of service. We've got, there's two coffee shops there, and guess what? People hang out, they're on the internet all the time. So there is a need for this here. So what, what I'm, what we're recommending is that we go, we need the coverage, and we need to rely on the people that are submitting the plans and the Planning and Zoning Committee to, to, to make sure that, that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted and that kind of stuff. So there, there may be, there's a lot of talk about the denigration of the Vista. You go to look at that area, and there's the power lines, power lines going right through there. And, and over where I live, there are cell towers that are the old ones that aren't, you know, fixed up. And it, it is truly ugly. But we need the service, and so we just, we just want to let you know that there is some support out there in the community for this, because there is a need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any others that wish to speak to this item? You, you've had your...
Yes, I did, but just one.
No, not from the audience, and no. We're, we're good. Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Any comments from the board real quick before I close the public hearing? Supervisor Sirdi, did you have a comment?
Not at this time, no. Couldn't see, I think there's a couple, several different motions that could happen today, so.
So in this, in this case, then, I'm going to ask that, that...
You didn't ask me.
I, I, I'm coming around.
Okay.
Next. Supervisor Kavanaugh, you have a comment?
Sure thing.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, yeah, I think, hearing these, hearing the call to the public, what we didn't hear is something similar to the last case we, we were listening to, and that was, we didn't have an expert from the real estate community supporting the issues of lower home values. And so, you know, I, I think, are, are we going to have an opportunity to question Gilbert again?
We can, we can bring Gilbert back.
Yeah, let's do that. I think that's the more appropriate place. Thank you.
Supervisor Miller, and then Ms. Ogier.
Just real quick, Vice Chair, the, all the testimony we just heard, though, if I heard it correctly, and I might have to go back and listen to all of it again, but there were no facts of finding that I, at least I would see where that would play into this. In other words, the reasons to deny it were not in that testimony. And there's certain elements that you have to have for these facts of finding before you can do that, because that's how the federal government has set it up. I just, and I don't know if the Attorney's Office wants to elaborate on that, but I did not hear anything that I think that would go into that type of response.
I think it's in the email, letters and so on, the emails. It wasn't, I don't think anyone mentioned it today, maybe one, if I recall, but...
And there's other questions of locations considered and the actual coverage and the, a few other things. Ms. Ogier.
Chair, ask chair. Board members. So with, with this application, you didn't receive an estimate from a real estate professional saying they supported the citizens' arguments that we receive via email and letter, and their, the citizens' arguments that said their property values are going to go down because of this. You, there wasn't, I didn't see one.
That's correct. Any letters of opposition? You'd have them in front of you. Support, if you will.
Support. All right, thank you.
So at this time, hearing some of these things, I'm going to ask for motion for continuance to September fourth.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Did we close the public hearing or are you leaving the public hearing open?
I'm leaving the public hearing open.
Yep, I just want to make sure that that's clear for the record.
No, yeah, with continuance to September four, leaving the public hearing open. Do I have a, I'm asking for a motion. I didn't, I didn't make a motion.
Oh, I thought you made the motion.
I'll make the motion that we continue to September fourth and leave the public hearing open.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you. Item fourteen. This is a public hearing and discussion, approval, disapproval of ordinance number two zero two four dash PZ dash zero four two dash two two. An ordinance approving case PZ zero four two dash two two, and I have, surprise, Mr. Bach, you're back.
Okay, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. PZ oh forty-two twenty-two and PZ PD oh forty-two twenty-two, Rock Creek, otherwise known as. This is a proposed rezone request from GR to R seven on approximately ninety-eight-point-eight acres to allow for a subdivision, as well as the approval of a planned area development overlay on the same. This is located southeast of Judd and Cypress Drive. Owner is Entitlements LLC, and Seth Keeler, I believe is here, is your applicant. So this map here shows you the, the general location here, north and a bit east of Florence. This shows you the more zoomed-in map here. State land, as you'll see, is, is to the east, and when I zoom in on the aerial here, you'll see that the, the roads really are nonexistent in that area to the south and Vicinity map, and this is a conceptual site plan here. You have, as you see, a community park in the more or less central location to the west. This shows you the proposed building standards. And this is looking north. From the proposed site, this is the south in its current condition, looking to the east and looking to the west. So items to consider, the proposal is based on the latest development standards that are consistent with the current market conditions and demands of the surrounding area. To date, the county has not received items of opposition regarding the project. Planning and zoning commission recommendation was for approval with the one stipulation there, and then with seventeen stipulations with the PZ PD, and staff would be happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
And I'm sorry, I did neglect to acknowledge that fourteen and fifteen would be talked about together, as you have just done, so. Are there any questions for the staff from the board? I, I hear one, yes. Supervisor Miller.
Just the note to the side there after the stipulations with update, with updated ordinances.
Correct.
What does that mean?
Yes, so, so there was a...
They're not in place yet?
So the ordinance that made its way into your packet had one error, and at the top line correctly read ordinance, and then it said resolution in the body below. So we noted that, we made a correction, so the ordinance shall be presented with the sign is in place, and so you'll have that.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff from the board? Hearing none. This is a public hearing, and I'll open it up. Oh, I'm sorry, applicant. Sorry about that, just having you sit there. Mr. Keeler, come on down. And I'll sue Mr. Longacre.
Good afternoon. Rob Longacre from WLB Group, Mr. Seth Keeler from Entitlements LLC. We wanted to thank staff for the review of this project. We wanted also to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for recommending approval of this project as well. Seth's group looks forward to taking the next steps on this plating. They have interest from builders, so look forward to bringing some good housing to this area of the county. We are pleased to respond to any questions, your comments you may have this afternoon.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for the applicants? Hearing none. I guess you're clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this point, because it is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Like I said, are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this item? Hearing seeing none. I'll close the public hearing, and I would ask for, at this, at this point, I'd ask for a motion on item number fourteen.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number fourteen as presented with one stipulation.
Second.
The updated ordinance?
Yes. And the updated ordinance.
There you go.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you. Item fifteen. Make it a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number fifteen as presented with seventeen stipulation.
I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you. Gentlemen? And at this, at this time, it's been recommended that, I believe, by Supervisor Sirdi, that we take a break.
Do you want to withdraw this one?
I'm sorry, are we withdrawing something? Oh.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Let's, let's jump, right before we do that, item sixteen has been recommended for withdrawal at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to withdraw item number sixteen.
Chairman, I'm sorry. Before we make that withdrawal, this is a public hearing, so we still have to have the public hearing.
Okay, we can do that. So it's, okay. So I've got that. So item sixteen is a public hearing, and is there any from the public that wish to speak to item sixteen? Seeing hearing none, I will close, I've opened the public hearing or closed the public hearing. There we go. Just to be official. And at this time, make it a motion, please, for withdrawal.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to withdraw item number sixteen.
I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a motion, I have a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Okay, gentlemen, I think we're going to take a break here for about, what, fifteen minutes? Does that work?
Eleven.
Eleven minute, well, okay, I'll round up, thirteen. Okay, thirteen-minute break. We'll be right back.
We've already done twenty.
We are out of our little recess. Oh, yeah. Just for the record, Supervisor Kavanaugh has left the building, so we still have, we still have a quorum up here with the three of us. And we are now on item number seventeen. Mr. Wanamaker, you are up, sir.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Vice Chair, members of the board. Chris Wanamaker, county engineer. I'm happy to be here to present item number seventeen, which is the subdivision infrastructure design manual update. It's been long overdue. So if you recall, I believe back in April, we had a work session to go over this item, and at that meeting, it was requested that I reach out directly to the development community, request their comments and concerns, which I did. So to date, we've received eighteen comments. Many of those comments were duplicative. We provided responses to all those comments, and that did result in four very minor changes to the manual. And if it's appropriate, I may, if I may read these changes into the record.
Please do.
So the first item was amending the last sentence of section three point one to read, FEMA approval of the LOMR must be supplied to the flood control district prior to the issuance of any building permits for structures within the floodplain portions of the subdivision. The next minor change to be read into the record is amending section six point one two point two to read, the minimum longitudinal street grade for all streets is zero point two five percent. The third minor change we made to be read into the record is amending the second sentence of section seven point four, I'm, I'm sorry, seven point two point four, to read, the building envelope shall occupy not more than sixty percent of the total lot area. And the fourth change that we made as a result of the comments to be read into the record, amending section six point nine point five to add a sentence that says, "All fifty-foot radii shall be per ADOT standard detail C dash zero five point three zero or mag standard detail modified to fifty feet." So with, with that, is there any questions about this manual, or?
And there would be questions from the board. Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Chris. The very first one was a LOMR, I think?
That's correct.
And, well, I'm just curious, because we, the issues we had kind of up there by highway with a builder that was changing drainage right and left, could we have stopped giving him permits because of what was going on there? I mean, because I clearly think that that was...
So I, I believe what you're referring to, it has to do with drainage ordinance and a drainage manual, which is something separately that we're working on. This FEMA... and a drainage manual, which is something separately that we're working on. This FEMA, LOMR, as...
LOMR.
Yeah, the LOMR is, has to do with a letter of map revision. So when you have a FEMA floodplain, a floodplain that's on a federally designated map, there's a process you have to go through to change that floodplain or remove it to make the land developable. So this amendment clarifies that basically, let's see here, that we need to have that letter of map revision approval by FEMA, the federal government, before we would issue any building permits for homes that would have been within that floodplain. So that's what this does.
Because you have to validate that you won't affect anything downstream by this.
Well, that's part of the review process, yes, but we don't, ultimately, we, in a subdivision...
But FEMA is making that decision, not us.
Right. They have to go through FEMA's process, yes. But this section has to do with being subdivisions, making sure that we're not putting new homes in the floodplain. So this is to make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Let's see. This is a public, a public hearing, so I will now open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak to this item? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And I would ask that, if there are no other questions, that we, did I make it a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item 17 as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Oh, uh-oh.
Can we just add to that motion as read into the record since those updates were indeed read into the record?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item 17 as read into the record.
Ah, corrected very well. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Wanamaker, appreciate it. Item 18 is a public hearing and discussion, approval, disapproval of Resolution Number 082124-RD24-027. And I believe this will be Ms. Celeste Garza. How are you today, ma'am?
Good afternoon, Vice Chairman, Chairman, members of the board. Celeste Garza, Deputy Public Works Director for the county. Item 18 is extinguishment of a drainage adjustment. This development, let me show you on this map here. This development at the intersection of Ironwood and Pima was originally looked at as one big site plan. The whole section, it stretched all the way north to Pima and all the way west to the residential development. And at that time, in 2018, they dedicated some drainage adjustments, and they also did the off-site improvements and built the pad locations for future site plan properties. Since then, we've seen all the infill lots fill in, and this location is a site plan for a future Dutch Brothers. That Dutch Brothers is going to dedicate a subsequent drainage adjustment or underground at their location, so this would be extinguishing a portion of that previously dedicated drainage adjustment. This is the site today. They're working on the vertical construction, and then this is looking south. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions from the board to Ms. Garza? Hearing seeing none. All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Are there any folks from the public that care to speak to this item? Hearing and seeing, hearing and seeing none. I will close the public hearing. In this case, I would ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item 18 as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Those in favor? Aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing none. Therefore, this item passes. Thank you, Ms. Garza. We are now to item 19. Discussion approval, disapproval of a budget amendment for the Adult Jail Education Secure Care Program within the school superintendent's office. Ms. Bressard, you are up. You weren't, but you are now.
Fewer and fewer.
Well, hello today, supervisors. Thank you for having me. This is just an approval to revise the budget because we did that reorganization and brought this program under the county, and this, we weren't ready to submit the budget for this item to be included in your general budget at that time. The, we were supposed to have budget here, so I was going to hand this off to them, but let me just say, we, it's already self-funded. This is not going to affect your budget. It's just giving budget capacity to allow those funds into the county budget so that we can use them for this program. Does that make sense to you?
A pass through, yes.
Three weeks into the budget, we got amended already?
I know. It's crazy. It's crazy. So are there any questions from the board? I don't see or hear any. In that case, thank you, Ms. Bressard. May I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item number 19 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Those in favor indicate...
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you. Item 20, we have done. Item 21 is discussion of board members' requests for future agenda items and/or reports to be presented at upcoming meetings.
County manager Natasha doing a great job getting us items on the agenda.
Okay, well, I have one. So because Supervisor Kavanaugh, in his individual capacity, raised various concerns at the county canvas, I suggest the board direct staff to work with Elections Department and with outside counsel to review the methodology and analytics the supervisor used to reach his conclusions, and to also have a forensic audit done of the technology utilized in the primary to determine if there's any validity to what the supervisor is alleging, and report back to the board at a future meeting. Get that? All right. If that is it, then in this case, we're adjourned. Thank you.